I'm going to call immediately the Stormwater Committee to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Lisa, are you hearing everybody up there?
Yes.
Go call Mr. Pius.
Yeah.
Mr. Pilling.
Here.
Mr. Agia.
Ransum.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Fournette. Gula. Ransum. Since we have Attorney Mitchell here, I will entertain a motion to take Agenda Item 5E, update on 2371 County Street out of order.
So who?
And the motion is there second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Pius?
Aye.
Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Agia?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Fournette?
Aye.
Gula?
Aye.
So Attorney Mitchell?
Thank you. Since we last met, Mr. Ennis and his family did get an estimate of work. It's detailed as a price, not just the work, but Russ looks here and you can address that. I may have to send the copies if I can get them off.
I'll pass them over.
Sure. There's a couple more ideas. And it's basically to remove the evidence debris that we saw that day, wooden branches and other items that were on the top, and then to fill and cap it. So it's an estimate I understand the family can live with. They believe it will take care of the problems. We weren't sure how this committee and also Conservation, how they wanted to be involved in this, if they wanted to go see.
Do you see that, Lisa?
Uh, no, I can't see anything.
Yeah, I'll email a copy to you when you're back in your office.
She couldn't see it, you know?
No, she can't see.
Okay, so I'll stop with Mr. Pilling.
Okay, let me try to zoom into that. What is it? Estimate?
It's an estimate, I'll tell you.
Okay. Oh, okay. So does that include permitting for Army Corps and everything?
This is not to do with complete fill. This is just to clear that area.
Lisa, what it says is Bobcat would operate to clean up the backyard dumpster rental, 15-yard dumpster, to take the top debris, which is wood, branches, stuff like that, and then delivery of clean fill, and the amount is $3,320. So for right now, what we're talking about specifically is, and I ask Mr. Pilling, if he should comment on, or have questions about exactly, we all saw what was there. So you want to comment on, it started appearing to be building debris.
Yeah, but that was all in that top layer of debris and wooden branches that they're referring to. So that's all part of what's going in the dumpster. But you asked me, you would tip some kind of a possibly filling in the backyard?
Essentially, yes, I'd like to continue to fill it.
But that's not part of this.
No. That big retaining wall that's there, the concrete retaining wall, that was never put in properly a few years back when Mr. Pilling was alive. He took a look at it, said it wasn't put in properly. Just pulling away from the door, that's what I saw. I want to take that all down, landscape that, put a deck on that side of the house. You don't want to worry about doing that. I want to take all that concrete and put it into that big hallway in the middle.
I realize the speaker wasn't in the middle of the room.
Did you hear me?
He said, "Did you hear what?"
Everybody, you know what?
Uh, it was really muffled, so.
If you want to come up to the chair there, Mr. Ennis.
Yep. Eventually, I want to take down that retaining wall, and that's all concrete. A lot of dirt underneath it. I want to landscape it down, plant grass there, some trees and stuff, and beautify the area, pick out a permit, put a deck on that side of the house. That's my intention.
I don't see it. I never saw a retaining wall top there.
It's a big concrete retaining wall. As you walk down the backyard, that's what's holding up the whole building. At least in the swimming pool.
This system that you got, you dug from Teeskey.
Yep.
Is that he wanted, is any one of the guys that opened stuff there?
Well, he dumped decent stuff in there. This other guy got in there and I saw.
Oh, you think he would give you a good break, Joe?
Um, he's, he'll work with me. He told me I'd give him the fill at his cost and stuff like that, yes.
So this effectively is just cleaning out some of the stuff that was on top that didn't belong there in the effort to use clean fill. That's what this is talking about removing, which doesn't necessarily remove the obstructions to the stormwater or into wetlands, which if he's going to be filing to keep all that and to move forward with that, then it's not worth taking it out if he's going to be allowed to put it back in. So I do understand that part of it.
Not that type of debris. I don't plan on putting that type of debris.
No, 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 I understand that. But I'm saying this has nothing to do with that. Only it's just, I'm saying this doesn't remove the obstruction to the stormwater. This is only taking off the top stuff that is construction debris if you will. So.
Can you explain to me a stormwater, explain to me what you're talking about?
So the old train line that's there, the water is moving from north to south, right?
Everybody runs that, everybody runs down here, right?
Right. It's all running down here, like north to south, right? And so as the fill gets pushed in there, it obstructs it, makes it help the channel down or whatever. And that's, that's why we get involved, is because the natural flow of water is being heated. So, and again, if he's filing to keep it, then there's no point having to take it out. Let's just put it back in again. So I would say if he's taking out the stuff on top, that's great. But if he's going to be bringing in fill to cap the area, I don't know if I want him bringing in fill to cap it if we're going to end up making him take the whole thing out. It's a waste of time to put it in. And removing the debris off the top is great, and I think he needs to file for whatever else he wants to do. And then we can discuss whether or not he's going to keep it or take it out, so.
What's supposed to take in the top off? You're going to try and make him take everything out. If he maybe takes everything out, you're going to take everybody else's still then take everything out.
No, I understand. That's what I'm saying. I don't, this is just a discussion. This is not a motion. It's not a vote. It's nothing. It's just a matter of, yeah, how far do we go at this point in time?
Well, our impression was that they were down there. There was no question there was certain materials that had to be removed, whether he fills, whether he doesn't fill. And what Mr. Ennis and I had talked about after the last meeting was, Lisa immediately addressing the problem of the wood that's here, the timber, some of the construction materials that don't belong there. So that's the reason for this. If your suggestion is, you know, we cut off the cost of the fill for now and then determine, because Mr. Ennis has told me that, you know, he does want to fill the remainder of the land and, you know, have a bigger lot. And I discussed with him how to go about that and the possible costs, so. But he surely wanted to cooperate and get out. I mean, I think no matter what he does, the debris that we saw on the boat around there, that has to come out, correct?
Well, that's what I'm saying. At this point, I would rather you just do the removal of all the top stuff and not bring in the fill until you get a permit to bring in the fill. That's what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
I'm quite determined.
So hold off on that 5:20.
Who gives a damn?
The answer to that question isn't that simple. It depends on the amount of fill you're bringing in, the area of disturbance, et cetera, et cetera. Some of those permits may not be on the local level, so we need to have a deeper discussion about that. I agree with counsel that we get rid of the stuff that doesn't belong there, which actually could be, you know, doing damage to the wetland areas, paying a property. So let's get, let's get rid of that stuff, and then we'll worry about the filling at another time. I'm not saying that you don't, you can't do it. It's just we have to determine what the permitting process is to get that done.
There aren't, we need a little process.
Right. Uh, Mr. Ennis, I think what we're talking about is a series of steps. That would be the first one. Remove the stuff that shouldn't be there, right? And obviously, don't fill it in with fill, like to propose to you, because you've got to go, you've got to go to Concon, I assume, while you're working. Lisa, is he working with Concon?
Uh, he's attended one meeting, and we've had initial discussion. That's it.
Okay, so once you get that, let's say the first two steps, the machine work in the dumpster, that's done. Then Jim, furthering the process, what's the next step? Is, who does he go here and tell? I think we have to meet, Mr. Pilling and I would have to meet them. Get an idea of what it actually is that you want to do, see the area of disturbance. Some of these square feet doesn't involve, et cetera, et cetera.
He's got the yardage.
The yardage is different than the area of square footage, so.
Yeah.
And then we, and then along with Lisa, we can let you know what the process is for permitting.
Yeah, I think, yes.
But you have all those figures. You don't have the site area.
I agree. I also wanted to add that there should be a survey of that area, the lot itself. So we're not, you know, you know where, where the property lines actually are and the extent of fill, the square footage, the height.
With trailers, there's a property mark right there.
Yeah, Lisa, I think that's all we know as part of the permitting process through whatever boards he needs it from.
And some of the work, as you just said, was served and maybe done already. But that's, again, we agree that's part of the process, so.
What would you also know is Harry, do you fill?
Exactly.
Do you need to know the square footage and the debt?
Exactly. Because.
And that'll determine, Russ, if you have to stay here or if you want to go to state, right? Because they may have jurisdiction to do that.
Right. In the course of this project, I'll call it, that water is going to be freed up? Well, by removing some of this material, it will free up some of the water, but. There's water in the railroad bit. Yeah, I don't know that that will free up enough to release that water. I don't know.
That's not going to affect the water in the railroad bit. Well, that water in the railroad bit, the state has a pipe. Just show them here, there's a bolt of pipe. It runs, the drain runs down into that railroad bit. They should have never done that. Because they've got drains right down on the corner of Hot Street. They put a random drain down, tie it on the hot street, and ran straight down to this part of the road. It ran into the railroad bit. That's what the biggest area of water is from that. Of course, it's being blocked up on the other end from people who filled it low down to its hot street. There's what's blocking it. A few years back, I had, I remember years ago as a kid, I used to see people working down there on the corner of Hot Street on the railroad. I used to walk up from school bus. It was on mosquito control, but you used to clean that out every year and maintain, keep the seed down. They recently, a couple of years ago, put a machine in there and drained that out. We checked that out. First of all, mosquito control. Steve was the engineer. I made him down, I probably down in favor, because I had the same problem. I made the seeds. That went out a few years ago. I don't know if he can back six. But they didn't, were able to go far enough with the blocking. With the guy, people came across both sides and filled that with algae. That's where the spark went to the lot, and the water came across. I can see, yeah, I can see. See clearly in the car. That's why you put that bird on my property. The water runs down here like a river. My rain's hard. Runs down here like a river. And they put the bird there trying to keep some of the water and wash the front driveway out.
So as far as this estimate, we'd be looking at the first two items, not the third, correct? Hold off on the fill.
Let me just finish the question, though.
Sure, go ahead.
So if the fill's maybe impeding now, if they want to keep filling, they would have to have something in there to allow the flow to continue, whether it be a pipe, a culvert, a swale, whatever it's going to be. I'm not telling you what to do. Just something would have to allow that water to continue to flow. Understanding if there's a backup downstream, whatever, that's got nothing to do with you, but the water still has to go on both sides to yourself.
That's their problem.
Anyway, that's what you're referring to. I'm seeing the water's coming from north has to still be allowed to go south. You can't just fill the dam because then it's all going back up. You have to still, like, just get a pipe or something over the water for, you understand me?
Yeah, that's as you fill, so.
Yes. Not for today. That's what, if you want to fill, like, the whole.
That would be a problem. I could put a pipe down there.
Right, but that's when you get to that part, and that'll also depend on, again, how much you're filling. I just want to make it clear that we have to still allow this water to continue moving.
I got a question, too. I mean, you guys, you know, passing time about maybe move it, move it and all that stuff. Again, I know who made the complaints. I will talk to the general. He's been complacent with me before. That guy tried to buy my property years ago. I tried to find a way to tell him to sell the hell off the property. He's been driving people, stuff, brush on his property. He's that damn lot. That's the guy that was up on my property. I think it was the same guy. Stacks it down. He stacks it down. He could see it. He saw it. He's telling me, sorry. You all walk up from this property with the Audi vehicle. He's got stuff stacked high up in the highway now, down there, a brush. Why is he allowed to get rid of it?
Well, that's.
This is a public right now.
Yeah, it is. So ultimately, you're dealing with different boards and different sets of regulations and all the rest of it. But ultimately, it comes down to we're doing these things one at a time as they're made, or made aware of.
And you're aware of it now.
Right, so now we have to do something. Now we have to do something about it, yes, so.
I completely agree with you. We don't do selective enforcement. We're aware of it. We need to, we need to, all bodies who are responsible, if they're responsible, need to be subjected to the same.
I know what I said, I'm sorry. The message I think down my property, now I'm going to be around. Move back, man. It's on my carpet, see? I'm going to be around, you know, the supervisor, watch us around.
So we'll have to get, but I agree with you. We'll have to, as a town, anyone who's attracted has to have the same violations.
I just, I don't see why I have to do so much while someone's in my line, where everybody else is still present. We don't do this. That includes, that includes our deceased siblings, right?
I know. I inherited that department. I know everything you tell me, okay?
So he, he, you know, we're talking, come on. But you're going to make me judge who's. That's all I am. I don't see the shit.
Uh, Mr. Ennis? As Mr. Pilling said, when we get a complaint, we have to follow it up. You stated concerns about someone stacking, storing, brush, whatever. That's fully held, isn't it?
Well, it depends. It is, if it's a nuisance, if it's in a wetland, then it's Conservation Commission. If it's a big, it's helping it, then it's the Building Department, so.
It's really a rural, right?
No, no, I'm saying she was asking who's responsible for it. If it's on the side of the road, it's Mr. Berry, so it's.
So the fact that you have stated the issue, what I would say to you, it's going to be followed up by the appropriate, I'll say boards, because I don't know, again, how many there will be. But for this issue right now today, can I get a motion that would, I'm going to call these steps. We're going to call machine work step one, dumpster step two, and fill step three. So can I get a motion to agree that Mr. Ennis can move ahead with steps one and two and that he will be in touch with Mr. Agia and Mr. Pilling to discuss further action? Does that work? Is there a motion?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm taking, and I know this is in the future, what Mr. Ennis was stating. As we become aware of the next of water, we all know that down the line, this has all been filled in as personal property. I agree with steps one and two, but I think prior to making Mr. Ennis expend more money to correct the problem and it ends up with the water behind his house, that we have to get all involved along the railroad to, what are we going to do with the rest of the people?
Okay, that's my point in asking that we move ahead with steps one and two, because the discussion we had indicates that we don't want to spend the money on fill because we don't know how extensive the rest of the work's going to be. So right now, I'm only talking about one and two, the cleanup, or obviously, it needs a dumpster to put it in. So Mr. Rans, we're talking about Agenda Item 5E, and we got an extra copy of that sheet that you issued, Mr. Rans.
So for those people at home, Mr. Rans joined the meeting at 1:20.
Um, so Mr. Rans, step one is machine work, step two is the dumpster rental, and step three is the fill. And during the discussion, the consensus was that the motion on the floor is that we, okay, that Mr. Ennis will be ahead with steps one and two, but that we not fill the property yet because the rest of the motion is after one and two are done, he will be in touch with Mr. Pilling and Mr. Agia to talk about the next steps, because this, really have to look at the problem to see what other boards in town may be involved and whether or not the state, the EP, whoever, might have to get involved. So right now, he's talking about cleaning up the debris that we saw when we did the site visit. Do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no, I don't. I do not. I've been on the property, we've been down to the site visit, and I think that's what the committee would like to propose would suit the needs and purposes of that, I will wait.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have something to say. I'm just not sure when this is removed. Is that ground there stable enough for excavator to come in there? You know, are we looking at creating a bigger problem by allowing, you know, dump truck in there repeatedly? Or like, could it collapse? I don't know. Just thinking a little bit about that. It looks like it.
I guess this is good advice. It's going to be Bobcat, right? Bobcat, yeah.
Yes, the Bobcat in the dumpster, so I don't think there's any heavy.
Okay.
Right, they're not going to drop the dumpster over the hill. They're going to leave that up in the small part of the yard.
Okay.
Bobcat will bring it up and put it in the dumpster, so.
Okay.
It should be stable enough, yeah. Jim, you agree with that?
I do, and it looks like they're proposing this to be done on an eight-hour workday, and the dumpsters are only 15-yard containers, so those are fairly small, they're not very heavy. So it looks like they put consideration into exactly what you're bringing up, Lisa. So it looks like they use the right equipment to get the job done.
Sounds good.
Anything else? Hearing none?
Uh, just, just that we be notified prior to the start of work, right?
We'll let hold committees know. I'll send it to you and to Mr. Pilling.
You want me to get this done now, right?
Soon as possible. Watch me take a vote. Not today. Mr. Pius?
Aye.
Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Agia?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Rans?
Aye.
Mr. Fournette?
Aye.
Nancy Gula, aye. You're all set until next step. Thank you.
So can I call you later?
Yeah, sure. You can call.
I'll call later today about tomorrow's meeting, okay?
Sure, yeah. This meeting sometimes goes till like 3:30, so anytime after that.
Five o'clock or so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What time is it?
Thank you for coming in. One morning, Bob.
I'm going to clarify with five minutes recess because we're going to continue hearing at 1:30.
I was going to say, Nancy, if you do it, I would like to see if I can have a private thing here for.
Yeah, go ahead. So we're in recess?
I'm back, folks.
Okay, you're now.
Okay, we're back and on. So this. Are the attendants here from Clearway?
Yes, we are. Hi, it's Dave Cowan here.
Who else is on from Clearway?
So we also have Tim Sullivan from TRC, who I think you all know from previous meetings. And we've invited Seth Jaffe. He's our outside counsel, and I, we've only invited him because there was, there was a question that may come up about a legal technicality. We're not, we're not bringing our lawyer to the meeting in that sense. We just, there's an open question from us that I think is with the committee that might, might warrant some legal advice. So I guess you could say we're making him available to the committee at no cost to the committee should a question arise.
Okay, thank you. Do we hear from Chief McDonald?
Yes, he cannot come. What he said was, he dropped off a report. He can't make a meeting. Give her back.
Okay.
Chair, I'll sit to your real property.
Yes.
Then I'll have to excuse myself.
Okay. Dave, we'll be with you just a minute. Chief McDonald dropped off a report. It's downstairs. So Mrs. Grass, you went down to get it.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
So what I just put in front of everybody while we're waiting is the most current set that Clearway gave us, which is dated July 23rd, 2021.
Do you have a chance to open up this?
There were only minor little corrections, and no, I haven't. So I'm trying to find the sheet now, but they can probably go over those what they changed since the last, the last time we met. Because there's been two revisions to the plan in between, but our last meeting, it now.
Okay.
Yeah, we're happy to go over those changes whenever you're ready.
Okay. Mr. Cowan, you want to start with the changes?
Sure, sure. Thank you. So at the last meeting with you all, we received a couple of comments to make adjustments to the plan set. So the first comment had to do with the location of the entrance pad and the wash pit and relocating them further back beyond the building space.
That's 701.
Right? So it's not the block, the walkway. So, so the engineers completed that, and as Todd indicated, it's on the appropriate suite in the plan set.
Okay, Chief 701. So looking at that row, my first question is, and I'm probably not reading the legend property. I see the red line, which is the area of delineation. I'm looking now at the stockpile of topsoil. What's that funny little line with all round circles inside the red line?
Silk panics.
Oh, okay.
That's not, those are version control silk panics.
That's what I was wondering. Do we know if that soil is going to remain there for a period of time? I know it grew on those grasses long enough. But has any decision been made? Has that stockpile going to stay there? If it's going to stay there, are they going to
Take away.
allow it to grow into grass, or is that silvery sock going to have to be replaced?
No, my understanding that's a temporary stockpile during construction. No, my understanding that's a temporary stockpile during construction while the site is being graded. And then once the subsurface is graded as needed, then the topsoil comes back into the site.
Okay. Does anybody have questions on this plan? Other notation, the change that was made? Okay.
We asked for it to be behind in front of the building, and it's now behind in front of the building, so it's not in the way of pedestrians and doesn't affect the light coming off the street. So it's, it's where we asked them to put it.
Next.
Okay, so the second change was, there was a Jersey barrier that we had proposed around the wash pit to prevent vehicles, pedestrians from inadvertently stepping into this, this depression. And it was requested that we modify that to a type of barrier that is hollow plastic, that can be filled with sand or water, and that is brightly colored for visibility. So that has been changed and it's reflected on the detailed sheet of the plan set.
The 701 also?
That's on, that's on 802, folks.
802?
Correct.
That's got a hurdle pool on it.
802 has got nothing to do with that.
Jersey barrier detail?
Usually barrier detail in the middle of the, in the middle of the sheet.
Plastic barrier?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. Well, the note on sheet seven says she see 801.
Okay, I'm not an engineer. Where is it on 802? It's on.
It's in the bottom, middle, middle of the bottom.
Oh, I see it. This thing here.
And these barriers are standard, they're all interconnected, but we fill with sand and such. So there would be no gap in the, in between, so they, you know.
This is down near the, the main building and where pedestrians might be. This is going to keep them from roaming?
I would think it should.
Because it's like two feet deep, so we didn't want it right against where people were going to block them and they were stumbling.
Right, so my example was, I'm going to come out of that building and I don't pay attention because I'm used to walking across whatever. So when I come out of the building, it's going to be in the building so that I just can't go walking wherever. Okay, any questions, anybody? Okay, next.
Okay, so the other item has been something which we've discussed at, you know, a series of meetings. And, you know, we have, we can confirm that our construction team has met with the, with Chief McDonald on July 23rd. They had a productive meeting. And the chief kindly provided a letter memorializing the points they had discussed and agreed to. And so we provided a copy of that letter to, to Mr. Pilling on August 4th in our email, just to, just to inform the committee that we're, we've caught up on that item as far as we know.
This letter is dated July 24th?
Correct.
All right, I'm going to read this into the record because Mrs. Cowan, you wouldn't have this. And this is, is being taped for public viewing. This letter is from the Dyken Police Department, and this report was written at the request of the Stormwater Committee, July 24th, 2021, to whom it may concern. This letter takes to the proposed solar field at 1522 Williams Street at Arujo Stone Greenhouses. What this letter will contain was also communicated person to Amr Ali Sayed of Clearway Energy on July 23rd, 2021, with Dyken Police Chief, Chief Robert McDonald. Mr. Sayed was advised that a police detail would be necessary at the proposed solar field at 1522 Williams Street in the interest of public safety. Chief McDonald's main concern is the safety of patrons visiting the business and as well as the motoring public who travel along a very busy Williams Street. With a police detail, we are hoping that this can limit the congestion and confusion for the public with an officer on site with construction equipment slash vehicles and patrons sharing the business main entrance, parking lot, parking area. It is paramount that a police detail be in place to keep all parties safe from a potential accident. A police detail shall be utilized when construction vehicles and deliveries and will be entering the property. If unloading slash loading is required at the street, a police detail shall be utilized as well. In the event that no trucks or deliveries are being made at said site, a police detail would not be required. The Chief of Police or his designated will have the right to shut down the job site in the event it poses a risk to public safety. All detail requests will be made to Patrol Nicholas Barrows, who is the department's scheduling officer. He can be reached directly at 774-504-8497, either by phone or text. Police detail should be scheduled at least a day ahead of proposed work, but it is encouraged to schedule detail days ahead. Details can be scheduled in four or eight-hour blocks. If a detail goes beyond a scheduled eight hours, then the company shall pay a rate of 1.5 times the detail rate. If a detail is requested for four hours and where it continues past four hours, the officer will be paying for eight hours. A detail can be scheduled for eight hours. If work is completed within four hours, then the officer will only be paid for four hours. If a detail needs to be canceled, the said company can cancel an hour before the scheduled detail, which will eliminate payment to the scheduled officer. If a detail is canceled within the hour of the officer's start time, the officer shall be paid a minimum of four hours. The current detail rate for the Dyken Police Department is $55 per hour. The overtime detail rate is $82.50 an hour. Therefore, a detail can be scheduled, excuse me, before a detail can be scheduled, the company's representative shall provide a billing address and contact person for all billing purposes. Any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact this department and assign by Chief Robert Allen McDonald. Does anybody have any questions on what the chief has submitted? Or is there any discussion? Dave, is everything set with your company on this as far as the chief and everything else?
Yeah, yes, I confirmed with the head of construction for the project that the meeting occurred and they agreed with the, the terms as laid out in the chief's letter. So I made that confirmation again today just to be sure, and Clearway has confirmed.
Okay, what do we have next?
Well, the one, the one other item is, you know, the pathway, I guess, next steps. Where are we with the committee? We, we have our hearing with the Conservation Commission tomorrow evening. We had been on their agenda for a month ago, but there was a technical matter that required us to continue. So now we're, we've got our hearing tomorrow night. As far as we know, we've addressed all the comments certainly received so far from the commission. And so we're looking today for Stormwater Committee's approval, if, if you would consider that.
Mr. Pilling, you have anything else? Mr. Agia, Mr. Ferry, does anybody have anything they wish to ask or the info line relative to this project?
I don't think so.
Not stormwater related, no.
Okay, Mrs. Ferry?
Nope.
You're all set?
I'm also, also.
Very good. As far as Cleancom goes, are they pretty much through? Are they still dealing with Cleancom?
Still doing it.
Okay, but if the Stormwater Committee votes on this today, it is not going to hamper anything we are doing?
No.
Okay, all right. Hearing the further discussion, is there a motion to approve issuing a stormwater permit? Or?
Before, before we do that, can we, can we talk about the conditions?
Okay, well, obviously, the conditions are on the permit, so yes, go ahead.
To a person.
Oh, wow.
All right, so I know we kicked this around before. And I think most of stuff everybody was okay with. But at the last meeting, well, let me say, one of the conditions we had in the draft was about the police details that we can just, I want to modify it to say in accordance with this letter instead of like our own stuff, because July 24th letter we got. We originally had fuel storage tanks are prohibited, but I wonder if it should be without proper approval from the...
Yeah, they, they can have them as long as they're permitted properly and on-site correctly. So I don't have an issue with onsite fuel tanks. I just want to make sure that the appropriate departments are involved in the permitting. As we all know, the last project we had, they just, a tank showed up. So we just want to make sure that doesn't happen.
So how about if the fuel storage tanks are allowed only with appropriate permits?
Okay, in a minute, Spa, July 21st, bottom of page three. It said, "A draft of the stormwater permit and conditions were reviewed." Name is on, item number 12, no fuel storage tanks allowed unless they get a permit. So this is following up on what was discussed then?
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so that's, yes, you can certainly add that.
All right, while you're in the minutes, the Stormwater Maintenance Fund, I think we talked about $10,000 for each lot.
Each lot.
$10, yes, $10 per lot, $10,000 per lot. So that would be obviously both 1420 and 1522.
So that being said, I think I have enough that we can finish it. I don't know if you want me to read off the conditions to everybody or what you want to do. There's 12 conditions currently.
Why don't you do that for the public?
Okay.
Todd, I have a comment on one of them. I just want, was hoping we could add something to number two.
Before we do that, I'm going to ask Mr. Pilling to read them. And then anyone who has questions on any of them, you identify them by number so that we can take them one by one if we have to, okay? Mr. Pilling.
Okay, number one, conservation commission order conditions will be recorded prior to pre-construction meeting and proof of recording submitted to the Stormwater Committee. Number two, provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan, otherwise known as SWPP. Number three, a pre-construction meeting with the engineer, site contractor, and Dyken Stormwater and Conservation Agents prior to tree cutting and excavation. Number four, install and maintain soil filtration control, including maintenance of access road onto Williams Street. Number five, utilize dust control measures on the access road as needed, minimum of daily applications. Number six, stormwater agents will witness test piss at the locations of the drainage basins for soil classification and water table prior to construction of basins. Water table is within two feet of the bottom of any basin. A redesign or groundwater handling calculations will be necessary. Any redesign or calculations must be submitted prior to installation of any soil array infrastructure. Number seven, the drainage basin shall be rusted and erosion control installed prior to installation panel infrastructure. Number eight, stormwater maintenance. A, submit of an O and M operation and maintenance plan for the entire drainage system. B, submit of a long-term pollution prevention plan for the entire drainage system. C, annual report storage to the town Stormwater Committee as part of the O and M Long-Term Pollution Prevention Plan. Number nine, establish and maintain a stormwater maintenance fund in the amount of $10,000 for yearly maintenance of the access road and drainage basins, if not satisfactorily completed by the owner. Must be established and submitted prior to reconnection. Number 10, drainage and access road asso plans must be submitted and approved prior to final electrical sign-off and issuance of certificate of completion by building department. Number 11, to ensure public safety, police details will be determined with the police chief or his representative and project manager in accordance with the letter dated July 11th, uh, 24th?
24th.
24th, 21. If the chief visits the site and determines a detail is necessary for public safety, work will stop immediately until the detail arrives. Number 12, fuel storage tanks are allowed only with appropriate permits.
Okay, so does everyone have questions on any of these? And identify them by number, please.
Yeah, number two, I was just going to suggest that we add at the end prior to start of work, or we could say prior to kickoff.
So number two is to provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan prior to the pre-construction meeting?
Yeah, by the, that would be better.
I like, that, that works for me.
Prior to pre-construction meeting?
Yep. Because that was kind of what happened with one of the other ones. We didn't have it when they started, and then they had a copy, but we didn't have the copy. So yeah, I haven't been at that pre-construction meeting, then we can talk about what's in. Anybody else?
Do we need to have, you just made me think of something. Do we need any kind of wording that indicates that there must be somebody on site at all times who knows what to do with the pollution prevention plan?
Well, that's included in the stormwater pollution prevention plan, that that's supposed to be the case. And so. We just would recommend that they have more than one person trained so that they can deal with it.
Are they going to have one of those boxes, the information in it too?
Good idea.
We usually, I mean, it's up to them if they're, they may have a construction trailer that they keep it in.
Well, as long as it's on-site, it's always nice to do with it.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have anything? On number nine?
The Stormwater Maintenance Fund?
Yeah, in the amount of $10,000 per lot.
Well, we have two separate permits, one permit for each.
Oh, all right, okay, that works.
I'm just going to give clarification that there are going to be two permits. So these conditions will be the same for each property.
Okay.
I'd like to, we can marginal amend item number 12 with the fuel storage tanks to the wording that Mr. Pilling used before we started this. Did you repeat what you had mentioned?
Wait, you want to go back to the prohibitive word? Do you mean the?
It is, no.
Oh, fuel storage tanks are allowed only with appropriate permits.
That's, that was the definition.
Second. You have a motion, a second, any discussion on that? Carry on, all in favor, Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Sagia, aye. Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Farnett?
Aye.
Nancy Gula, aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to item, item number two and to include, to amend that prior to the wording be prior to the pre-construction meeting.
Okay, so that was to ensure public safety. Police details will be determined with the police chief, on his representative, and the project manager in accordance with letter slash report from Chief McDonald dated 7/24/21.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Agia?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Farnett?
Aye.
Nancy Gula, aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to item, item number two and to include, to amend that prior to the wording be prior to the pre-construction meeting.
Okay, so that will reprovide stormwater pollution prevention plan, otherwise known as SWPP, prior to pre-construction meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Agia?
Aye.
Ferry?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Farnett?
Aye.
Mr. Gula, aye. Is there a motion to approve the issuance of the stormwater permit with the amended conditions?
Is discussion allowed to, to the developer to make a very important amendment?
Well, if, first, I will ask for motion, and then we're going to open it up. But discussion, I understand.
Well, by us issuing the permit, it means we're issuing the permit. I would rather not issue this permit until after the conservation is done with them because I don't want to have to like reopen all the carrying and stack this over again.
Okay.
So in my opinion, if we're going to issue this, it's, it would have to be like.
Intergenerational contracts.
Yeah, or allowing me to sign off on the building permit or whatever after.
you know, the conservation is done with it or something. Because I just don't wanna have to reopen this public hearing process here at stormwater.
Okay.
And once you close the hearing, public hearing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, well, that's a good point, because we don't know whether out of Concombs, they may be modifications to the site plan based on Concombs input.
Definitely come back to us.
Right, exactly.
Okay, um, Mr. Cowan, you wish to comment?
Yeah, I, I guess the way we've been thinking about it is, um, you know, the same might hold for any step along the way in a process. Typically, these permits occur sequentially. At any point further down the line, you could encounter a change, right? That's requested by the next, uh, the next step along the way, which might require you to go back and revisit, uh, permits. We'd like to think that we're kind of building toward, uh, an approval, uh, at each step as we satisfy and, and, uh, gain the approvals, uh, along the way. So, um, if I were to phrase it, uh, from our perspective, I'd say we're comfortable with, uh, having a permit issued, knowing that, as, as is always the case, we might need to go back if something changes further down the line.
Okay, well, there isn't a motion to issue the permit. What you're hearing was, and what I certainly agree with is, because I signed an email asking if we would issue a conditional permit. My answer, uh, my personal answer is no. And, uh, the discussion that I just heard, uh, also, uh, supports that position, simply because we are still in a public hearing state, which means we would continue this public hearing until we know if Concombs is, uh, in a position to, uh, issue a permit, because everything's been addressed. Uh, the problem with closing the hearing, issuing the permit, bringing it back again, it's, it's, that is really how we do things. So, my question specifically is, uh, because there is gonna be a motion today to issue this permit. When do you think, is Concombs the last commission you have to meet with? Or board?
Right, until we get to, I think there, there may be a revisitation with the planning board. Um, we're sure there's some level of revisit there. We're not sure exactly what, yet. Um, and we, obviously, we need a building permit as well. Uh, so, those would be the next steps down the line after stormwater and Concombs.
Okay, and so what I'm saying to you is, stormwater is gonna be contingent on Concombs. And quite frankly, I think once we get beyond Concombs, things are gonna fall into place, because I would hope if you've gotta go back to planning, you would get that in schedule relatively soon. Um, I, I think that I can say, at this point in time, there's consensus, consensus of this, uh, committee, that at the present time, we don't have anything that would hold up issuing a permit once you are all set with Concombs. We just don't wanna close this public hearing and then have to come back and go through something. Uh, quite frankly, we had to appear before a conservation commission in another community on a public hearing that could close last November. And it took us quite a bit to get the thing opened again. Um, we don't wanna have to deal with those kinds of issues. And so, I think at this point in time, to reiterate, I think you're all set with us. There isn't gonna be a permit approved today. And you really need to get everything straightened out with conservation and the planning board. I think, uh, on this committee, we have conservation, we have planning, we have building, we have highway, border health, uh, stormwater agent, rep from the border select, and you name the department, we've got them on this, uh, stormwater committee. And I'm not hearing anything except the, the ones I just cited. So, I would suggest you move ahead with those, and we're gonna hold this. We're not gonna close the hearing. We will continue it, and, um, if need be, I could schedule a special meeting, but it won't be until I know everything is ready to, to go, that we can actually vote on it.
Yeah, no, understood, and we, you know, we, um, thank you for adding further explanation on that. I, I suppose maybe, uh, you know, our, our primary, can, primary concern is to, you know, move things along timewise. Uh, and not, we're not looking to shortcut anything, certainly. Um, there was a question that came to my attention from maybe a, a prior meeting, about the possibility of a special meeting. If we succeed tomorrow with Concombs and complete that process, uh, rather than, we're only one day between these two committees, right? So, uh, is there, is it possible to have a stormwater meeting sooner than a month from now? Uh, if we, if we succeed with Concombs?
Yes, it would be a special meeting, because our regular meetings would be the third, uh, Wednesday. Uh, but if, if, um, I hear that you're all set with Concombs, and what you, and in fact, if you're all set with planning, or planning says you don't have to wait for us, uh, you just have to let, I would say, let us, Pilling, know. And Mr. Agia, know where you are. Uh, and we can certainly schedule a meeting to act on it.
Um, well, because this is a public hearing, we have to schedule to a date certain.
Yes, correct.
So, we have to decide today what date we're giving for a special meeting?
Yes.
Because it's members of the public following, or whatever, we can't just announce it forty-eight hours prior to the event.
Exactly. The mandatory, I mean, I just, I just wanna elaborate on something that was discussed earlier, Mr. Cowan. If we close the public hearing, you would have to re-notify your partners, you would be, have to be put back into the newspaper within fourteen days of a meeting. So, there's a lot of parameters that would have to be done on your end and also the town's end in order to have, if we were to close the public hearing, in order to reopen. So, we, we would prefer to keep this in a continuing stage, that way we don't have to broach that.
If, if there were modifications. If there were a future modification, yes.
I, I might just ask, it's, it's sort of a hypothetical, but, um, and I'm not well-versed in, in this, this town's procedure, so forgive me, but if we, um, if the conservation commission finds uh, that we're ready for approval tomorrow night, and we receive that approval, if the stormwater committee public hearing is still open, is it just as possible that something comes up subsequent to Concombs with stormwater that requires us to go backwards on Concombs? Or no?
Well, I think at this point in time, we've, we've told you everything we want. We just don't wanna close the public hearing, because once we close it, you can't give us revised plans. So, if the conservation tomorrow night says, "Change it from A to B," you have to come back to us with those revised plans, for those to be the plans in record with this department. So, that's why I wanted to leave it open to accept anything, any changes that come in. So, like, I know what you're saying, but no, I don't think you're gonna get anything else from this committee unless you change something drastically with the commission.
Okay. Um, I, I suppose that our, our next request is whether that special meeting can be determined, and, and you know, and when, and what's the process for trying to secure that?
Well, that's what we're trying to do right now.
So, Mr. Frenette, if the commission tomorrow night decides they wanna issue an order of conditions, when would they actually issue the order? Would it happen tomorrow night, or is there...
They have twenty-one days to issue it, but they, they can, you know, depending on the need or, or the availability of people, they can, they can issue it in a few days.
So...
No, actually, I'm away next week, though, so that wouldn't happen.
But even, but I'm gonna get at it, it's, it's a few days.
Go ahead and explain, but take your hand out, so I can read you a little.
We, yeah, we have twenty-one days, so, uh, we'd issue the orders within twenty-one days, but it won't be next week.
All right, I'm looking at the first of September, it's a Wednesday, that's two weeks from today. Is that possible?
I'm sorry, what was the thing again?
September the first. When are you coming back?
I'll just be gone ten days.
Okay. Oh, this is two weeks from today, yeah, you'll, you'll be all set. You'll be sailing.
I'm on hold to September, but I'm here that week.
Okay, Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
September first, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
All right, so, we should continue this public hearing to Wednesday, September the first? Uh, one-thirty here?
Does the department have meeting in the morning, but...
Yeah, I see that.
It should be done by one-thirty.
It will be, it'll be a reason to come here.
And presumably, at this meeting, all we may be doing is closing the public hearing and voting to issue the department.
Yes.
So, it should be a very close meeting.
This is assuming that Concombs says, "Okay, go ahead."
Yes.
And there are major revisions that can't be done. And get back to, uh, Mr. Pilling, Mr. Agia, whoever else needs to see it. If there has to be changes to the plan, uh, Mr. Cowan, as soon as you get the, that notification, if there are any from Concombs, you've gotta be able to turn it around in plenty of time for the first of September, so that, uh, Mr. Pilling, Mr. Agia, whoever else is involved, we have a chance to look at it and get back to you.
I have a question.
Excuse me, Mr. Cowan, you there?
Yes, yeah, I was gonna say, that's, that's understood. We've gotten, we've gotten pretty good at that recently, so we're, yeah, our team is ready to turn things around.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Cowan, you go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, um, you know, has the changes warranted them going back to the planning board? Do they now?
Mr. Cowan, you answer that?
I know that, um, I think maybe Tim has had the most recent conversations with representatives from planning, so I'm just gonna defer anything I provide would be sort of second-hand information, so...
Sure, at, at, at this, at this point, we've been, we were asked to provide the, the final version of, of what, um, ends up through the stormwater committee back to the, back to the planning board. That's, that's the last.
So, would that be a public hearing process as well?
That I'm not sure of.
Mr. Ryan, where are you with the, uh, this particular project, planning board-wise? Would there have to be a public hearing, or if they, if there are some things that have to be changed?
It all depends, it would be a, a minor site player review or major site player review. If it's minor, there would be no public hearing, but if it's a major site player review, you'd have to go to a public hearing.
So, the question is, um, anybody from Clearway that might be able to answer it? What do you anticipate the changes may be, major or minor?
When was the last plan set that the planning board saw?
My, go ahead, Tim.
Of go, go ahead, Dave.
Well, my understanding is that's the, it's the approved, the prior approved plan set, if I'm not mistaken.
We, 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 yeah, we've, we submitted, uh, we submitted a, a, a version, and I, and I don't have the date in, in front of me, but it was one of the ones from, say, the June, the June timeframe was the last, was, was possi- was the last version that was submitted to planning.
So, I can give you some clarification. I'm gonna tell you how this is gonna happen. When they submit for a building permit, I'm gonna require a series of signatures. One of those is the planning board. I can guarantee you, based on the plan that was submitted to planning and the plan that we have before us now, it's gonna be a major change. That means the planning board is gonna open up a public hearing and go through due process in order to approve this amended set of plan set. So, that process is gonna take place before I can issue a building permit.
Does it affect the stormwater committee?
No, um, I don't, I can't speak for the planning board, but I think this plan set has gone through the ring, and I don't see any concern on the planning board's part, although, yeah, I can't...
I'd have to, at this point, I would send a brief with the building commissioner.
Right.
Um, I don't foresee that they're gonna be changing this footprint, uh, in any way, shape, or form that's gonna affect the planning board for a second.
The only unknown is it's a public hearing. It's a planning board, which is a different, well, a different body than this. Maybe members of the public might have some input that would make some changes. Again, which leads to your suggestion to leave this public, this hearing open, just in case there is. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm a bit baffled as to why you haven't been to planning, although I understand that there's been changes. But now that we're at the point that we're at, why bring your next step after tomorrow night's meeting to go to, to go to planning? And maybe that is your, your plan, I don't know, but I haven't heard that yet.
Yeah, that, that, that was our next step. We, you know, are, and as soon as possible after stormwater and conservation commission, our intent was to get right to planning. I understand that, that, uh, Mr. Sullivan has been coordinating verbally, uh, with someone from planning. We don't want to, uh, and we haven't wanted to, uh, submit multiple plan sets while we're going through changes, but we've kept them apprised that changes are in the works. Uh, I think, uh, as Tim indicated, there was a submittal back in June to sort of update them on where we are. Uh, but in the meantime, there had been some additional changes to the set. So, we wanted to make sure when we went to them that it was the set and, and not burden them with, uh, with multiple submittals.
So, you went to the planning board in June?
Informally, there's been some discussion, sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Correct, yeah, we, we submitted, we submitted a version of the plans, um, and, and, you know, it was in the mayor, mayor-June timeframe. And I think subsequently, um, there were additional changes that came out of this process. And so, I had a number of conversations with, with, uh, with Carrie in the office, um, you know, about kind of what, you know, what's, what date we would be on and what's the middle. And, and as there kept being changes through this process, we, we agreed at that point, we would, um, wait until there was a final, final plan set through the stormwater committee and kind of regroup at that point.
So, do you have a date with planning or not?
I think they're waiting for conservation meeting tomorrow night to make that... I don't wanna speak for you, but it sounds like you're waiting for tomorrow night's meeting with conservation commission. If that goes favorably, you've heard from this body that we look upon this pro- uh, project favorably, and then I would guess you would reach out to planning and find out what the next step is with them. Is that true, Tim?
Yeah, I mean, there's been some uncertainty, so we've been, uh, working informally, letting, uh, planning know uh, that we're coming, but we're not, we haven't been certain even up to, to this moment, uh, you know, what our dates would be, for example, with stormwater committee. Um, so, it seemed premature to set a date with planning until we, we could complete Concombs and stormwater.
Okay.
Well, I definitely wanna leave the public hearing open here, but I would definitely not wanna close it today, so... But if we wanna schedule a special meeting, and if we do schedule a special meeting for Clearway on September first, I wouldn't want that to be the only item of agenda, because if they can't make it to that meeting, I don't wanna have a meeting to, in between, you know, I'd rather just go to the regular meeting. That's my personal feeling, so...
I agree.
So, was there, was the September first date okay with everybody?
Yes.
So, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing for fourteen-twenty and fifteen-twenty-two. Williams Street Solar to September first at one-thirty PM.
Second.
You have a motion, you have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Agia?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Frenette?
Aye.
Insecula, aye. We're all set?
September first.
September first, one-thirty PM.
Good luck tomorrow night, Dave.
Thanks very much.
Dave, before you go, just keep in mind, uh, just, please keep in mind to, uh, reach out to Mrs. Eason Day, who's the planning board's office manager. We're in a summer schedule right now, summer schedules means we only meet once a month instead of twice. So, you know, you know, reach out to her and, you know, see what's gonna be up next, possibly after you meet the conservation.
He certainly will, yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks all.
Uh, does anybody not want their set of plans, so I can take them back, keep them all together at this point? Uh, Mrs. In the virtual waiting room with Mrs. Sullivan, Brook Street. And you'd rather Mr. Carr with the abutted beret of solar on.
Okay. Um... I would, uh, I would press, so we make a motion that we take agenda item five, C, on water?
So, who?
So, a second. Discussion, hearing none, highest?
Aye.
Pilling?
Aye.
Sagia?
Aye.
Ferry?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Frenette?
Aye.
Insecula, aye. Update on Beret of Solar. Update on Berango Solar.
No, Brook Street Solar.
Oh, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong one, wrong B. Go ahead. Uh, Brook Street Solar, where are we with that one?
Uh, let's see, we were out there lapsing at the sidewalk and all that, and they've been under construction.
I have more update, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, I was just telling you, so you got to the.
So we have, we, uh, we have a problem with, um, uh, from the electrical side of things. There's a ratio that's required by state, um, by the state code for electricians versus laborers. My electrical inspector went up there, didn't have the correct ratio, the job was shut down for a period of time. It's my understanding that they have now complied with that requirement, which is not a technical requirement, it's a state requirement, and they are back operating. However, there is something Agent Pilling and I have to go out and look at to either verify or, um, take witness to. We've been made aware that the telephone poles that were approved for the site are not put in the, uh, location that was on the planning board approval plan set. So Agent Pilling and I have to go out there and see whether that is indeed accurate or not. If they're not in the right site, uh, right location, sorry, then, um, we're gonna have to go back to planning for modification.
But otherwise, things are still moving forward up there. The drainage seems to be being controlled. Um, they've been responsive when we've asked them to put in additional controls and we haven't really had a problem in the street, so.
So if we did a big storm, although Mr. Ferry says we don't have to worry, but if the remnants of Hurricane Fred cause a deluge in the next few days, will somebody be going out there to look at it again just to make sure we don't have silt?
Yes.
If somebody has to go out, I hope Mr. Ferry is contacted so he can go too, because he's in charge of weather.
This is just a, uh, question on the chair for the building commissioner. I'm standing there. When do you anticipate going back out to the site to look at the top of falls?
Um, tomorrow is really tight for me, so it's probably November.
Yes.
They're replaced now, there's nothing we can do, so, uh, we need something.
Or assume if we get that rain.
When's the rain supposed, when is Fred not supposed to be here?
Fred's supposed to not show up tonight.
Okay.
Then there's gonna be a little break and then there's the concern about already, but Fred is, uh.
Fred will.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so to answer your question directly, I'll probably come back. Um, uh, tomorrow is like, for me anyway, chock full.
Me too.
You know, you're a busy guy.
You'll be the air boy. Uh, okay, so, um, Mrs. Bosale, did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do, thank you. Um, when, we were concerned about the, um, the reservoir that they built, I'm not sure what you really call it, um, we were told that it would drain within seventy-two hours. Since that last storm that we had, when it first started draining, apparently it started draining very quick and it started going over those green, um, you know, those green things they have with straw? It started.
Silk socks.
Okay, the silk socks. Um, they, the water was going over that on the east side. So much so that they had to get bales of hay sent down to put on top of the east side. Um, so they did that. And then within, so remember this, we, we're being told that within seventy-two hours, that should be empty. Within a week, so we're talking a hundred sixty-eight hours, that pond was still a half to three quarters full. So much so that they got generators in there to pump it out for about four days. I don't know if you're aware of that. Uh, were you aware of any of that?
Well, I would like me to respond.
Uh, this is news to me, has anybody heard about this?
I have not heard about that.
No?
No.
No.
Mr. Ferry?
No, no.
Well, it's, that's what they did. And so now, cause the water looks like it's down, I don't know if there's still water in there or not. We can see it from our top floor window. That's how we're able to see what's in there. Um, so we're talking at least a lot of drainage on the first, the day after that, that storm that we had, the beginning of August, so much so, like I said, it went over that sock that they had to call in for more hay or straw and put on top of it. And within still a week, it was still half to three quarters full. So just to reiterate that. Um, and we're concerned, we see the alarm or alert of West Nile virus, which is what we've always said, we've had a concern about with a mosquito haven there. Um, and the trucks, since the last time we've talked to you, we've also had, um, one show up at about seven fifteen, left about quarter to eight in the evening. And we also had another truck, and this was not the, um, um, Porta John truck. This was some other truck that came at five eighteen A M.
Do you remember what date that was?
Oh, I don't know. It's probably something I should have recorded or, um, actually, we did record one. I think we recorded the one at, um, Alan may have it, I'm not sure. We, I think we recorded the one at seven, seven thirty, uh, seven fifteen, seven thirty, and left about twenty and a quarter of eight at night. Um, I actually, I think filmed that one. But at five eighteen in the morning, you're woken up by it, you're not ready to take any pictures.
How big was this truck?
One was, um, a huge one. The one at night was a huge one, one of those big tractor-trailer-y types.
Was it a box or a flatbed?
Box.
Okay. And the one in the morning, did you get a look at that?
I'm sorry?
Did you get a look at the one in the morning?
Yes, it was, um, probably about, you know, those big long tractor-trailers? The bed, the back of it, which was still a box, was about half that size. But again, it was not the Porta John one that we had problems with earlier. I don't know what they did. It was hard to see because it's be, they, whatever they were doing was kind of behind their equipment. I would say dropping something off. I don't know for sure, though.
Do you know if there were any workers on site other than whoever was in the truck?
No, I don't, I don't believe there were.
They wouldn't have to, someone, you know, to put the males out.
No, no, she's talking about the tractor-trails.
Yeah.
Which couldn't have been the one ahead. Oh, okay. Did you get the dates, by the way, of the, you've got the times, do you have the dates?
Um, if you give me one minute, I might be able to get my pictures and, and if I can't get it for you now, I think I can get you the date of that late one.
Well, even if you can give us that date after the meeting, you just email it over to us, because obviously we can have a talk with them. It'd be easier if you know the date, then they can see what the delivery was and it'd be easier for them to address it, so.
Okay, all right.
And Mrs. Bosale, I understand your concern about these issues and certainly too early or too late are in violation of the work hours. However, my concern is that when we had the pre-construction meeting, uh, no, it was the day that we had the visitors from Canada, when we were all up here, and you had to ask specifically who to call if there was a problem. Did you call any town officials when the basin was overtopping or when these trucks arrived or is today the Thursday?
It was a Friday, no one's around.
I'm around.
I did not know.
Tom Ferry's around. I told you to call, Mrs. Bosale, I told you that day when you said, who would I call? I said, Tom Ferry. I said, you can call me. Mr. Ferry's, uh, works on Fridays. Not only that, if you call his number, it goes to dispatch or he'll tell you, uh, you know, to leave a message. You can also call dispatch and say, we got a problem. They're gonna find Mr. Ferry on, he's gonna make sure somebody gets there.
Okay, well, first, for the, um, for the water, the, uh, we went over the sock.
Yeah.
I did, we did call on that Thursday, because that was the day that it was raining and it was going over. And, um, we said, you need to come up here and look. Whether someone did come up here and look, I don't know.
Who'd you call?
Uh.
Who'd you call?
I wanna say, uh, Stormwater. We called Stormwater. It was a gentleman that picked up, sounded like a young gentleman, I'm not sure. Um, but we did and he said he would relay the message and have them come up. I, I don't know who it was.
It might have been our intern.
When you say Stormwater, you mean the Board of Health Office? Option, option three on the phone?
I thought, actually, I was calling Conservation. And then it, when they picked up, they said Stormwater. And I said, oh, I thought I was calling Conservation, but I left the message.
I'm not sure who you've got, because even the intern would have said Board of Health. And if it was, wasn't me.
Um, here we go, let's have it. Obviously, they're doing their inspection reports after storms and all that, and we can go redo their reports of what happened. Obviously, it's not supposed to be overtopping, but what they're doing right now is using that basin as their erosion control basin during construction.
Isn't it temporary?
No, it will be permanent, but right now it's temporary and it's gonna keep filling up with silt and they're gonna have to keep cleaning it out.
That's why.
Once the grass starts growing, then they're gonna go to the basin, which we're gonna get to Berango in a couple minutes here. But theirs is the same thing. The sediment collected in the basin and they didn't scoop it out at the end after the grass was growing. And so it, it's a temporary basin. Grass will be going. Once grass is growing in there and everywhere, then it won't be seventy-two hours because the water will be allowed to infiltrate. Right now, there's a layer of silt and clay on the water, preventing water from going down into the ground. It's got nowhere to go except to stay in that basin like a bathtub.
Is that the way it was supposed to be when we got the water?
Well, it is until the grass is growing.
Okay, so it would have been, you know, I, I'm, sometimes I don't know when to call because I, then I don't know where it goes from there. I don't usually get any, okay, we've been there, this is the way it is, or, you know, I, I just don't know when to call. I don't know when, um, over, you know, being a pain in the neck.
So.
No.
No, you're not a pain. Uh, we're gonna try to find out who received that call because, um, you know, we're all at a loss of who took that call. So we, we'll find that out internally. Um, you should get some response, I agree. That way here, you're educated as to what is actually going on. Right now, those basins are in place to stop the silt from running into the wetland.
Correct.
We, we require those to be roughed in prior to construction for that reason. But Agent Pilling is right. In the interim, while construction's going on, they're gonna silt up and they're gonna hold water and they need to maintain them at periodic intervals so that we can try to prevent the overtopping. But in a heavy rain event, it's sometimes it's impossible to keep up with it. However, post-construction, before this is turned over to the town, those basins will be constructed in the way that they were intended. And as Agent Pilling said, we're gonna talk about Berango shortly, because there is some problem with those not performing properly. And this committee is gonna, uh, Stormwater Board is gonna discuss what the options are to get those to, so that they're back the way they were supposed to be when originally designed. So, you know, remember when I told you there was gonna be a few months of, of disruption? We're sort of in that time right now. And it doesn't mean that we need to not stay on top of it. Though there is some leniencies that we have to afford them while the construction's going on. Certainly waking you up at five eighteen is not one of them. Um, and, and you should get a call back from town officials when you reach out. So we'll work on that to make sure that we have an open dialogue back and forth.
Okay, um, in, could I just ask, in, in regards to the telephone poles that are there?
Yeah.
Are they supposed to be there? Because what I see on the cover of the planning, the plans, everything's supposed to be underground from that pole that the utilities put in, right in front of the berm, right in front of all that, it's supposed to be all underground.
Yeah, we.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah, we agree with that, that the poles right now are currently not in the location that they were approved for. And Agent Pilling and I are gonna visit the site on Monday to verify their location, where they're supposed to be, have a discussion with the developer. If they intend to leave them where they put them in, which is not in compliance with the approved plan, they're gonna go have to go back to planning for modification. And that will be a hearing that I certainly would suggest you attend. But right now, I can't speculate as to why they were put in the wrong place. It could be as simple as an error or it could be calculated. We don't know. We're gonna find that out on Monday.
What would, I don't see where there's supposed to be any. Do you see where there's supposed to be any?
Yes, there is some at the culvert location where the internet interconnection takes place with the utility. There are poles that were approved for that site at the culvert location. Uh, I, I don't wanna, without the plan right in front of me, uh, I don't wanna get too specific, but they go from the culvert up to the basin area, but not in the basin footprint. So there are a couple of poles that should be up at the beginning of the access road going into the facility. And that's where the disconnection takes place from the utility. So if there's an emergency, we can cut off the array from the power grid. That all takes place above grade through what we call fuse links that are actually at the top of the poles.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's in every solar route. Now, from those poles in, I agree with you, it's all supposed to be underground. And where the poles are right now, as we speak, they're not in the right location.
Correct, okay, okay.
Mrs. Bosale?
Yes.
Um, just to kind of move this thing along, I don't wanna touch you off, but.
No, I'm, I'm done.
We have a resident here on another, uh, issue. So, number one, when you were describing what happened and there was, uh, overflow of the basin, number one, they got bales in there, they got pumps in there. That's telling me they're following what they should be doing as a result of the discussions we had with them and the inspection that was done when there was silted runoff. So, and when you were describing it, I'm thinking there's muck in the bottom of that basin, that's why it's not draining. So that's been confirmed by the people who know about that stuff, number one. Number two, uh, I think it's very important that, um, grab a pencil and paper, that if you see something and you don't reach Mr. Ferry or you don't reach me, if you dial the business line, five oh eight, six six nine, six seven one one, and take option zero, you're going to get dispatch. And if you tell them that there is a problem and you need somebody from Stormwater, mention Mr. Ferry, mention me, but say to them, you need to reach somebody, there is a problem here and I'm. But say to them, "You need to reach somebody, there is a problem here and I'm supposed to let them know when I see there's a problem." That way, dispatch is gonna find somebody, okay? You don't have to, uh, you don't have to wait for us to have a Stormwater Committee meeting to, you know, tell us about things. And, um, uh, I think the other thing too is, uh, the, uh, inspection that's going to be done relative to the poles, I'm sure that's gonna be taken care of. But I can also tell you that, uh... I don't wanna make it sound like they're under surveillance, but I will tell you that the project does get, um... I was gonna say inspected, let me just say, we're aware for the most part of things that are going on. We were not aware of what you were describing, but again, it was during a rain incident and the call wasn't, it, wherever it went, nobody that should have gotten it got it. So, I think that the town will be putting in place measures to take care of that. Um, and we'll certainly get in touch with, um, uh, grasshopper to let them know that there were some, uh, deliveries that took place too early and, uh, stayed too late, arrived late and stayed late. So, um, and it may have been bales. Um, and hopefully we can, if you can get those dates, we'll, we'll find that out. If it wasn't an emergency situation because of the overflow, I really can't fault them for that if this thing is overflowing.
It wasn't that, it wasn't that.
In any case, well, when we get the information, we'll be able to follow up on it.
Okay.
So, rest assured, I think with the individuals that have spoken, uh, it is going to be followed up on. And we do need, uh, we do need you, if there is a situation, to be able to reach somebody. So, again, that, that's the non-business line at the police station, and if you take option zero, it'll go right to the whoever's on dispatch. And, um, so that would be helpful too. Does anybody else have anything? Do you have anything else, Mrs. Bosale?
No, that's it, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, and this will be on our next agenda as we continually update the project as to its life, so it'll, it'll be on the next meeting also.
Yeah, and our next, our next regular meeting is the, uh, third Wednesday in, uh, September, okay?
Okay. Alrighty, we'll see you then.
Okay.
Thanks, Tony. Madam Chair, I make a motion at this time to take item number five F out of order.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Okay, motion is second, discussion here, you guys, uh, the highest.
Aye.
Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
And yeah, uh, Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
So, hot. Borrego Solar. Mr. Carr, would you like to come up, this chair will be here.
So, Borrego Solar, uh, let's see, Dragon and myself and Mr. Caladoni went up there for our, um, uh, another inspection, which he wasn't a high inspection per se. Uh, everything appears to be done with the outline in the letter from September of last year. With the exception of two out of the three basins had silt washed in, like you had, you were just talking about.
Phase one or phase two or phase?
Phase two.
Phase two, okay.
There were three basins for phase two and two out of the three basins had silted up.
Is phase one okay, we're not talking about them?
One exception, which we get to, but yes.
Okay, so we're talking about phase two.
Phase one, phase one basins are working properly except for one.
Okay, okay, Mr. Pilling.
So, two of the basins have silted up during construction, but that's what happens when there's no grass growing, dirt will wash into that. What happened was, once they got the grass growing, they were supposed to clean the silt out of the basins and put loom down so that the water couldn't go into the ground. Well, they didn't do that, so right now there's a solid area on the bottom of the basins and there's six inches to a foot of water standing there. And this cat and high tail's growing and it's, it's, there's no infiltration happening because the water has no way to go. So, they submitted their agile plan to us identifying the elevations of the basin. The basin was constructed appropriately, it just silted up. So, we'd ask that they remove the silt and get the loom down so that the water can infiltrate into the ground.
So, when are we going back, how much time do they have to get it done?
Well, they want to start up this week, so it should be very soon.
Okay.
Um, on phase one.
So, phase one, we noticed that, um, the water overran the access drive in part. And, um, uh, on the way back to phase two, we decided to stop there and try to figure out what was wrong with it. And it looks like the roadway was constructed about a foot lower than it was, uh, it should have been. Uh, the basin was working fine, it was doing what it was supposed to, the spillway was working. Um, there might be a little bit of silt in it, which we're gonna address with them, but, but it, it didn't, it certainly wasn't silted up like the two bases in phase two. However, um, we are gonna work with them to get the access drive elevated so that you don't have to drive through standing water your way out to the back, uh, part of the solar. So, um, Agent Pilling and I are checking on that, uh, we, we have people who are listening, which I know for a while they kept saying, "No, no response, no response." We finally had people who were willing to talk to us, uh, and will make the progress. So, I suspect within a month or two we'll get the sink goes out.
Oh, I have a big question.
And, and it, it'll be in compliance.
So, by our next Stormwater meeting, we should possibly be looking to close it out, so.
Okay, Mr. Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Uh, Todd has been down to my house.
Excuse me, could you take that off because he leaves.
Oh, I can't hear him.
You know that.
We're gonna make this very in the ground. Uh, Todd has been down to my house to look at this problem. Oh, Louis, I'm going to here tomorrow. But where you don't need to next month, I figure I'd sneak in there. I got a problem, my neighbor's left the brook filled in.
Your neighbor's got the brook filled in?
Has he not?
So, let's back up for everybody's identification. If you're standing in Elm Street, okay, look out, there's water that comes down from the right side and there's water that comes in from the left, the left is Borrego. They meet together in a T and form one channel that then goes under the culvert under Elm Street, the Killstone, um, channel. So, what's happening is the water seems to be coming in from both sides, but once it hits the single channel of the T, the vegetation has grown up and it's a grass channel. And the vegetation that would normally have been mowed and maintained, but, uh, right now it's not being mowed down, it's very tall, very thick. And it's impairing the water's natural ability to go down this channel. Uh, I did not see that, I did not go on the neighbor's property because we don't have permission. Uh, I did not see evidence of fill being dumped into it or grass toppings or something that was intentionally put in to block the channel. But I could see that the vegetation was very tall and very thick. And I, I, again, I haven't been there, he's got the history to know for over the years past. When you look at any of the maps for the state, it's not a wetland, it's not a flood plain, um, there's no wetland changes there. So, the fact that he has standing water on his property is different than what D E P has recognized in the past, so.
Didn't this water flow through Howell's house? The basement? Cuz I remember him telling me that.
Oh, oh, you said water coming in the basement there, yeah.
But.
But the brook itself comes from Bill, I've got Bill's way.
Right, right.
And through the solar farm.
Right.
This is the only outlet for the drainage from them two sections. There's no other brook anywhere near there. My father started keeping it open so the water would flow through mosquito problems. And he did it for years.
Right.
And I just kept going on. This particular column now belongs to the neighbor. The two brooks come down, though, right there.
Is there?
No, pictures right there.
Oh, yeah, oh, I, I don't need these pictures, I know.
Yeah, you pass them on to, so she can look at it. I just marked it, my southeast and west. One shows where the watersheds are, the south across is where the solar farm is, north is Bill's house. East faces the Cotton River. Now that the solar farm's there, I get more runoff when it rains from the solar farm. And I brought this up many times, it's if the water of this section goes this way, comes down and goes across me. And I found it, so Tom, the brook.
Todd.
Todd, the brook. Now this guy has let this flood, this fill up with grass and stuff in the water.
What, what's this guy's name, like, uh?
Uh, no, no, wait, wait a minute, no, Bill, Bill, excuse me, no names.
No names yet.
No names.
That shows how it's filled up, I just took those.
So, Mr. Carr, when the, the, the brook, I'll call it, was maintained, the grass was down and the stuff was, it was clean and it was flowing?
Always careful.
Was there a problem?
Only when we had heavy, heavy rain.
Bills?
Or hurricane.
Okay, torrential rain.
Torrential rain. This time, it, it cut this plug up. This heavy rain we had was right across the front of mine. And I'd never seen it that bad.
So, this is the growth in here?
That's the brook that runs in front of my house.
And.
And you can see where the growth is.
Right, right, okay.
And I, you know, I don't know where to drive, it's Stormwater and Conservation.
Mr. Carter, you have any easements out there on any of these locks or drainage at all?
There, there's no... You're not gonna find any for maintenance, cuz this stuff was done back before the email.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean the town didn't create an easement or something at some point, that's what it was.
I, I'm not gonna say they did, cuz I'm over here. My father had this place since nineteen eighty-seven.
I was just gonna say, if you knew his father, Howell, Howell would have taken care of this himself because that's the kind of person he was.
And that's the way, that's what, the fountains were brought up that way.
But, and I can remember him talking to me about the water and like the house is built on some rocks, this ledge.
Oh, yeah, a little bit of that rock.
Right, yeah, and I remember him telling me about it.
Because the town, way back, Goff was the superintendent, allowed him to sort of drain it by from the house across Elm Street to a drywall on the other side.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's been there all these years, so the water come in and it can go out, but.
But that goes from the house to, yeah.
To a drywall across the street.
Okay.
And across the town, Tommy will test it, they brought a drain all the way down from Hot Street. The corner of Elm and Hot, down, pretty much that route on the other side of the road.
The problem is the water can't get to.
They can't get to it, it's flooding likewise up. Cuz my house is up higher.
So, yeah, the area flooding that we're talking about, I see in the pictures you showed me, it's probably about the size of this room that we're talking about. Uh, just to give you an idea of how much flooding we're talking about, it is not getting up to his house cuz his house is, at least it doesn't feed above the water. But it's the, the grass of his yard that, that is flooding. I'm not saying that changes what we're talking about, it's, it's not a public health, you know, it's not going into this house anymore, so.
I gave Todd a whole pack of pictures, they were, they're not marked, so some of them mean nothing to us. But the water coming from the solar farms, this last storm, which will happen. I'm not, I never really complained about that. It was coming right through the stone wall. Literally. But when it's like it is now, there should only be about two inches of water in that brook. But it's full because the water can't get out. The only thing they're taking notice is the sun, exactly.
Mr. Carr?
So, aside from listening, what jurisdiction was this committee had?
I'm, I'm wondering that.
We have personal property, we have no town easements, and we have a lack of maintenance by an individual who owns the property. To me, it sounds like a civil matter. I don't know, I don't know that we have any jurisdiction. I'm not trying to skirt or something, I don't know that we have any jurisdiction.
Yeah, we certainly can't go in there and do the work ourselves.
No, we don't have easements, we don't have town property, it doesn't involve town property. So, we've got two private property owners where the water, obviously proven, has historically flowed. But we have a lack of maintenance by one of the property owners causing property damage, potential property damage to the adjacent property owner. To me, I think it's civil.
Does this create any kind of mosquito hazard that the Board of Health would be involved with?
Yes.
We could, yeah, the stagnant water in this grass area, yeah.
Does mosquito control, county jurisdiction on private?
Well, uh...
No, I'd say, yeah, does the water move at all or does it just, just sit there?
It's very nice, it's just sitting there.
Well, it moves a little bit.
It can only soak it through, it's not receding because there's more water coming in than going out.
The water still does go under Elm Street, uh, there is water, the water is going through. You may not probably see it visibly, but yes, there is water that does get through. Not as seen that he's saying it usually goes.
But you have to take the water or just have some movement. The, the law, right, won't have an opportunity to develop, so, um, kind of lets that one off. I think if it's standing still.
Mr. Carr, I'm not gonna put you off either, but I would suggest that you do contact the Board of Health and also Bristol County Mosquito Control and ask them if, you know, you know, Mr. Mr. Hayes just said what he said. But rather just say to you, "We can help you." Again, if you contact the Board of Health, if you come up at a Board of Health meeting, I don't know if you're gonna get any different answers.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to say that what he's saying isn't correct cuz I know what he's saying, it was when I was there, but anyhow.
Why are you sharing with us?
The other part is the Bristol County Mosquito Control, um, because it would seem to me they could take a look at it and see if in fact there's any potential. The other thing too, as I saw on TV last night, Dyke reported a positive mosquito for West Nile, okay? So, um, I think that's your next step. As far as Borrego goes and our involvement with them, is there, other than the fact that water is flowing, which we knew it was gonna go? And we know the problem is on private property, is there anything else that involves us relative to Stormwater and Borrego?
No, historically, the water always flowed in that direction and Borrego, post-construction, is dealing with their Stormwater, or, hence the reason we have the basin. So, aside from the silt being up in the basin, which to me isn't contributing to any flooding to, it's just contributing to standing water, just, um, no, I don't see any. I have one other question though, the, the, the swale way is maintained, obviously not by you, by your neighbor, right?
Correct, it is not on Mr. Carr's property.
So, if it's not on your property, what dialogue have you had with that neighbor to say, "Can you please maintain the swale?" So, you've tried and talked.
He's mad, he, he's just, he's just upset, you guys aren't talking. That's unfortunate.
I have another question, when was the last time they maintained it or have they not?
When was the last time you maintained it?
Yeah.
A little, yeah.
Uh, probably March, maybe, or just before then, cuz I was, I was gone for three weeks.
Just to get, just to give them the benefit of the doubt, you know, this, this year with all the rain and the growing seeds, every, everything's growing crazy. So, hopefully they'll get to it if you ask them again.
I doubt it. I doubt it.
I mean, March wasn't that long, was it, right?
He, he thinks when the culvert going on the street is full, he shouldn't have.
I think, I think the best group is, as I said, I would mention it to the Board of Health for a meeting, cuz it'll be on the record. And Bristol County Mosquito may be the best option, they're kind of, I'm gonna call them neutral board. Um, but they are certainly responsible for issues like that, standing water and things like that, um, or.
Well, once I started mosquito problem.
Well, the other thing too is, if they get in touch with the property owner, maybe they can convince them that the importance of maintaining that for everybody in the neighborhood.
This is all a mess and I'm, you know.
Yeah.
Right, they can't just go in and do the work.
They just have to go to somebody.
Right.
I'll probably see you tomorrow night.
Oh, okay, did you let Charlie know cuz it needs to go on the agenda?
Just to, just to not walk in.
Public input is what he's looking for.
Public input.
Okay, we'll try to squeeze it in before it gets too late in the night for you.
Yeah, that, I'll second make an appointment, come and see you someday.
Meetings can go kinda long, so, but yeah, feel free to come and, um, we'll, we'll squeeze it in.
I can attest that the water from my property is still running. And it's running good.
And Borrego's is running up.
It's not running off his property, there's a problem.
It's bad, it's coming out, it's coming out the swamp slowly. But when he did this, it backed up the other way towards you. And it's been going up the swale that's behind twenty-six forty Elm Street, which was my old house.
Yeah.
That's soaking wet there too, and that's usually dried up and out. That's soaking wet there too. And that's usually dried up and out.
Okay, I think we're all, we all settled on this one? Oh, you didn't have a mention on Borrego or anything?
I just, we appreciate your time.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and we're not, we're still gonna keep an eye on it. And at least when I was still being around there to to peek at it and and see. But it's, there's very little we can do when it gets onto somebody else's property and it's just mowing up the grass. And she's right, I will, I, until she said it. I know I've been mowing my lawn twice a week in July and August, which some weeks they just like in a year, but go without mowing.
Twice a week?
So, and now I'm doing it twice a week. So the grass is rolling pretty good right now.
I'm still at three, four, absolutely.
Yeah, so it's...
I've got all that grass.
I'm not saying that's an excuse for it, but this year wasn't a different growth year than years past, for July and August, so.
But this 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 area is, like, it's water going on here. It goes into the, the color out in the street, but it's very good.
Okay.
It's very good. Yes, if that was, if that was all opened up like it should be, the water would flow right out of there. Have I seen how we've paid excessive water in years? Yes, but it never stayed like this.
Yeah.
And now with mosquito problem, so I'll call it mosquito control, see what they can see.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty good, Rob. They've do something, I'm sure.
It's just that corn.
I know what I exactly ordered. I know exactly what it is.
You know what I'm talking about.
Okay, Borrego, I just have a comment. You, you, when you were talking about the road, um, you might want to talk to Chief E, because he mentioned to me at one point in time, I forget how it came up.
Something like something.
But I said something to him, uh, thank Mr. Carr. I said something to him about, I don't know, how things on the hill. Because, you know, that road needed work, the access road. And he made me note something to the effect of, I can only get the attention to the road. And I said, if you have a problem with that, let us know. I never heard that, since you have been up there.
The road was pretty good.
I know it's like someone...
Well, I don't know, again, I don't know what Bristol was referring to. I got the impression there was something we wanted to address that needed to be fixed. Do you know what it was?
Yeah, I do.
Been quite a while.
It's good. It's great.
Originally, I was concerned about the vegetation coming in.
I'm gonna go down there.
I told you right about the road, right?
But that, they were actually there re-wacking and maintaining it. I was there and I actually went home and said that we have a problem. I thought, can I contact you? They said, yes. Um, so we didn't see that.
It couldn't have been this year.
So, and I don't know exactly what the exact problem was. It was that I said, hey, Mr. You having trouble with the hospital? Bring some stormwater. So, when you were talking, I got a feedback from him.
Yep.
So, okay, just, just so you guys know.
Okay.
Um, okay, let's move back to the, um, Agenda Item Five A. Cameron Drive.
Okay, that was fine. I'll see you after.
All right.
Hi, Mr. Carr.
Who went in for one Cameron Drive?
That would be me.
Just for the record, Tommy thinks that high tree had been involved when Molly went away, what happened, the step pool. If if Mr. Carr would have dropped by, wouldn't let the neighbor, it would have been fine. Send them in.
You always have creative solutions.
That's true. Well, actually, it depends on the type of...
So we had an application come in to the Board of Health for a septic claim for a new house. And the application came in, I went out and looked at the property. And they cleared up their property. The lot's thirty-five thousand, so if they clear it, or if they... But anyways, they, they gave them twenty-one thirty-five thousand's credit, so I said, you need a stormwater permit. The problem they have is the back driveway line was a stone wall. They went right over the stone wall and like twenty feet onto the neighbor's lot and just cleared it. So, um...
Did the stone wall go over the town?
I issued my septic permit, because obviously the septic is the septic. But from a stormwater permit perspective, I put in my letter to them when I did my review. I basically said, um, let me read it here. Please identify, a timing has been performed on a bonding property. And what measures will be taken to rectify the situation? And they just replied that the lot lines will be staked to prevent any further disturbance off-site. So I don't know if we should do more, ask them to replant it, ask them to put up some kind of other boundary to keep them from going further. I know there's a building permit process still involved in the stormwater permit. I didn't think from a septic perspective, because it's no maintenance septic system, that I had any ability to kind of rein it in. But I believe we can on the stormwater permit. And I, I just, I, I think it needs to be re-vegetated first of all.
So, I asked, like, how are you certain that they went over the property line? Was the property surveyed?
The property was surveyed. There were stakes down the right side when I got there. But, um, I measured from the back of the sidewalk with the hundred-foot tape, and I measured back two hundred and thirty feet, and the lot's two hundred and ten feet deep.
So you're fairly confident that they encroached it?
I'm within a couple of feet, so yes, they have definitely over the property.
Okay. Now that I'm aware of this, I have to let the property owner know whose property was encroached upon, that there was disturbance to the...
Who was violated?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll be doing that. I'll follow up.
But they are supposedly staking out the rear lot line too, and that would make it more obvious to the the naked eyes, so.
So I'll, I'll, I'll notify the property owner officially that where the town is aware that their property has been encroached upon, um, by a neighboring property.
Is the back boundary, the stone wall, aware of that stone wall? Is that's been, I'll call it breached and gone beyond? Is there anyone living on the property that's violated? Does, just go down to one thirty-eight?
It, uh, so the property, the houses will be...
Is it the house that's way off of one thirty-eight?
It is.
Okay.
It's twenty-three forty-four is the property address. And it's a thirteen-acre parcel. So there's no way that property owner would have any inclination that their property was encroached upon.
No way.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring it up here before we had a conversation.
So now that I'm aware of it, I'll be notified.
Okay, so, um, I think what we'll do is move this to Agenda next month and we'll wait to hear from Mr. Edgar. And I, I don't know if we had involvement or anything else, but we'll, whatever.
So is there a secondary question as to whether our stormwater permit is required now that they cleared?
Oh, no, it's definitely required, because the, it's over thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
Um, I believe there are lot sites, which they did clear the entire lot. The lot size is thirty-six thousand, it's pretty clean. So just that alone drifts up the property, so.
Okay.
Was this all wooded?
Yes. This was a vacant lot that has been vacant since...
It was part of that development that that sold, it's been sold separately. Nobody... The lot was sold separately, because there was supposed to be a development up there.
Uh, this is on camera. No, this is the last lot on the camera.
Yeah, the twenty-one, so there's actually nineteen houses that have been there for however many years in this area.
But are there two streets in there?
Yes. This is on camera.
But that wasn't part of the development?
It was.
Oh, it was? Okay.
It was, there was a singular lot that was sold off.
Oh, okay.
Early on, and it's been vacant ever since I've been here, so.
Okay.
And it was fully treated, yes.
They had gone in and done test pits in the past, and those, the plates were still visible and all that, so.
Okay, so we'll have an update on that one. Agenda Item Five, the witnesses about you, uh, witness committee, uh, okay, purchasing the clips and the calendars, and we did that out of last year's budget. Um, with the events that we've had, not that we've had many, I've pretty much given out the, I'll call it, the, the last of the old stuff, the bags, the, uh, grips. So Mrs. Grass and I are looking into acquiring probably some more bags and grippers, because everybody loves those, and they're all saying, they're all wearing out. And it's a good reminder, at least I know people using them, and they're paying attention. Um, and then we're also looking to see if we can find any kind of a educational item that we can give to younger children. Um, but anyhow, um, we don't have any numbers right now, but we are going to put something together and we will bring it back to the committee. Uh, it'll be out of this year's budget. Uh, once we figure out who and when, I know we've got a deadline, which we're probably gonna have to see if they'll send that deadline for that pricing. That, he probably will, because we've done this with him before, I think. But in any case, uh, hopefully at the next meeting, I mean, the next regular meeting, uh, we will have some numbers for you, whether it is we want to purchase. I'll, depending on the amount, I'll write it by Mike Mullin to make sure that everything is okay. But I know we talked about this before, uh, we just haven't gotten to actually picking up. Bags and grippers, yes. The things for kids, we can figure that one out. But anyhow, we'll be bringing that back to you for approval for the expenditure. Uh, so anybody have any questions? If not, we'll move to D. Uh, one seventy beach street, update.
I still haven't received plans for the septic system.
Okay. Okay, so that'll be on, uh, so both, um, the, um, educational materials and one seventy beach will be on the Agenda for next, uh, regular meeting, please. Um, update on Hart Street runoff. Okay, these are pictures here. So, um, these are, we're on, this is Caldonia.
Excuse me, so, because remember the boy?
Okay.
So, do you get that in the, in the letter?
Okay.
So Bill is accusing himself of the boy's speaking as a boy.
Mrs. Grass, do you think just with this is Caldonia?
Yes, she emailed them to me and then asked me to print them, because she couldn't print them. And actually, she tried to email them to my work email, and they wouldn't go through. They kept getting kicked back. She had to email them to my personal email, and I forwarded them myself.
They were taken on August fifth.
This is right about the time that this is, Uso Lea was talking about the rock screen thing, right, of the same storm.
Yeah, we got several inches of rain, right?
Yeah, four inches across a few days, yeah.
Does that sound right, Mr. Weather Professor?
Yes.
Thank you.
What time of the day was this? Was it still storming or was the, had the rain stopped?
It was right after the rain. Um, yeah, I think it was late morning or early afternoon. I can look.
You, you said August fifth, right?
What's that?
You said August fifth, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's day two of this weather event, everything was saturated.
So, I looked at the pictures.
One oh five PM.
Okay, just like that. I'm looking at the pictures. I can't figure out where the water's coming from. Can anybody look at that and tell me?
Is this, uh, if I said uphill, that'd be... Yeah. This is not the hot, my mom's helping, no, just one of the hot lots.
Have you seen those pictures?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, well, when, when they come back, okay?
I bet the water looks clear, I mean, that's for certain. At least the ones in that swale lot.
So there's like three different sets of pictures coming around with two different sets.
Mrs. Caldonia, can you tell us what these pictures are of what you're trying to depict in there? What would you be looking for?
So I took pictures of the, the drainage ditch, the countryside drainage or intermittent stream, whatever you want to call it, along Hart Street. Um, I took pictures of the runoff that was running off Dew Arts and then the neighboring property. It's hard to, it's hard to tell, but then you follow it and you realize when you... Because Bill was generous enough to let me walk on his property and take photos of the pond. And then you look at the ponds, and the ponds are, you know, coffee water. So, again, like we talked about last time, it's really hard to tell, to pinpoint one exact location of where the dirt is coming from. I did see some washouts, and I pointed them to, out to Bill in the swale of where the water's coming out of the side of the swale, the north side. Groundwater is seeping out into it. So that could have been part of the issue, or is part of the issue, um...
So...
Excuse me.
Sorry.
When I asked that somebody go take pictures, I expected pictures with times and dates, which I just got. I wanted pictures that I could look at to try to figure out where the problem is coming from. Without being able to identify that, I don't know what the Stormwater Committee can do. I look at those, I don't know where the water's coming from. Yes, some of the water is clear. And yes, I can see that there is muck in the pond. The south side of Hart Street is not part of what this committee is going to deal with. The problem I understand is on the north side. Talking to Mr. Burnett, and now I'm addressing him as a property owner on the south side, not as a member of this committee, doesn't help me at all. Now, I don't know if anyone else in this room is gonna tell me what I should be seeing in these pictures. But I can't use these. What we know is, we attempted to have a sidewalk scheduled for both of the properties on the hill, the two property owners. And I'm not getting into names. We all know who lives up there, and we all know that situation. One said yes, and one said no. Without any kind of documentation that I can point to to say there is a problem, it is coming from this property, we have documented evidence to that effect, I have no place to go. So I'm gonna ask again, Mrs. Caldonia, what could you actually tell us, you identified, without mentioning the names? Where was the runoff coming from on the north side of Hart Street? I know where it went.
So, okay, so I'm not sure if this photo made it to you, because I had to try so many times to send it, and the server was kicking it out. So my server, my email server, Dyson, wasn't accepting any of the photos, for whatever reason.
Have you got one that you can put up there that we can look at? Can you hold it up?
Yeah, if you want, um, I'll put, so there's, so if I could share my screen in a second, I just want to show you guys, because this is my iPad that I use to take photos on. There's, there's runoff coming between Dew Arts, which is what, five seventy-eight? Okay, five seventy-eight Hart, am I right? The address?
Yes, that's the one on your...
Okay, so...
The two houses, we know where they're from.
Yes, on the west side of five seventy-eight. And I'll share a picture with you guys if you want to see it. This is, um... So I zoomed in in front of five eighty-six, just east of the driveway.
The Washington on that picture, I'll say that I have been there multiple times. And it's, I can't say, here's the picture, here's the, the stream coming, right? I can't say it's definitely coming from here, or here, or here. It is impossible to say. That's why you don't have a picture there that shows, here it is. It's coming all the way out of the pipe right into the hole.
Okay.
Because there's, there's rose bushes growing in, in the middle of all of it. So if I was two feet tall, I might be able to climb through all of it.
If, in fact, here's one right here. This has got a picture of a fire hydrant in it and a ditch behind it with water running. Is that the north side or the south side of Hart Street?
Let me pull it up.
North. Edge of north.
That's the north.
Yeah, that's the north.
Facing west.
Correct, that'd be a stream of where we're resuming this time.
Yeah, that's down gradient of the, the subject site, yeah.
That's a good picture showing the conditions up there.
Okay, where are, where are the pictures showing me? This is, if this is west of the two addresses?
Looking, well, looking west. Looking, well, looking west, is it west of the two addresses that were?
No, that, that would be.
So it's looking west, what, we're east of the two properties?
Yes.
Wait a minute. That's an off on that wall, okay? I'm standing in Hart Street. Is this to my left or right? I'm standing between those two properties. To my left or to my?
Left, left.
Five hundred would be to your left.
Uphill, west.
No, downhill, west.
I don't know if I'm facing north.
Yes, well, west is down.
Yes, west would be to your left and down. If you think east is to your right.
Yeah, because 578 drains west.
Houses on the hill. East is right and west is left.
I'm facing north.
Right, yeah.
That's west.
Right, yeah.
Where is this?
To your left.
To your left. That's what's going.
Isn't that what I said?
He said uphill though, and it's down.
Well, the picture is obviously uphill because there's water flowing. This picture was, is, the water is clear.
Right, yeah.
So, I'm standing there, it's coming this way. It's running uphill?
Downhill.
Your woman's not that tall. She knows exactly where it is.
No, I'm not.
It's flowing west, downhill. If you're looking north, if you're standing on Hart Street looking north, it's flowing west.
If I'm facing the two houses, I can't do. If the, if the water problem is supposedly coming from two locations on the north side.
Yes.
And I am standing there facing them. You all agree to my left is west.
Yes.
Isn't that uphill?
No.
No.
It starts downhill. Then, is this picture of clear water before or after those two properties?
Right, that's, that's right over there.
The depth, it's before, top of the hill.
So that this ditch cannot pick up the runoff from those houses?
Right.
Stop, stop.
No, no, no.
No. No, stop.
She's absolutely right.
I know what I asked for for pictures. I'm trying to find out if this is worth anything and I feel like it's not, this is not.
This, this photo is down towards the Ronald Pool. It, it's between 586 and the Ronald Pool, on the north side looking west.
Then, then Tom Berry and Bill are wrong when they said it's upstream. So someone.
It's upstream of the pond.
Yeah, that's the one, that, would you say the address was?
586.
Is relevant. This makes no sense at all. I will say again what I said in the beginning. Quite frankly, what I asked for is what, not what I've got. These are totally worthless. I have not been up there during the pouring rain. I've seen pictures of what's on the other side of the road, we're not dealing with that. We are dealing with what has been described as two properties that have runoff. What we got to determine is, how do we get the runoff, the dirty runoff, the silted runoff, to get that to be clean like I'm seeing in this ditch? Quite frankly, I can't see that we can do anything with this today because I have nothing in front of me. If anybody can tell me, in any of those pictures, where that supposed dirty water is coming from, I will hope you're telling me because this is not what I asked for, it's not what I got.
The pictures I sent you show where it was.
The problem with the pictures you've sent me is, I can't use them.
Why?
Well, for one thing, you took a picture of an individual you had no permission to take. Number two, no, that was a picture of a woman, I believe.
Oh, yeah, well, I.
Start right there, start right there. I have made it clear, and I'm going to say it again. I cannot use the information you gave me because number one, you're the abbot with the problem on your side of the road. The Town Con and Stormwater Committee said they are not going to touch what's on your side of the road. It's a civil matter. Therefore, when you sent all those pictures to me, I looked at them, I couldn't use them because it's all part of that civil situation that you've got going on. And that's all I'm going to say on that. I asked Lisa to go out there and get me some pictures with dates and times and I expected to see dirty water that said it came from somewhere. I don't have pictures of dirty water except your pond, I can't use them.
Hey, Tom has pictures on his phone.
Do you have?
I have pictures if you want me to share the screen.
Mrs. Caldonia, excuse me, just a minute. Mr. Berry, do you have pictures that you can share with this committee that would indicate to us clearly what properties could be, or property could be identified as having silted stormwater runoff?
So, I have a few pictures on my phone, they all can't come off right now. I have one I've printed out at the base of the hill and then I have the next pictures on the phone. You can imagine that this picture is on the upstream.
Go ahead.
These pictures have had timestamps, so I can see where the time, I get the dates.
Okay.
I don't have that option, so I guess I need an app.
You can tell me what I have and you can tell whether it's relevant or not.
You were missing in the site, so before we get into that, can you just tell me, being up there when it was storming, could you identify, I mean, we know what the general area is, but could you actually identify it's coming from this one and this one and it comes down together or it's coming separately or, of that?
Right, the problem is landmarks and that's what you're looking for. So this one here had a mailbox and had this on it, which is good, the baseline, that's at the lower block. Next pictures up, I do have, that's what we're trying to get, is the mailboxes. Because that's all you had, other than that, other than you had a certain type of vegetation which we hired at that time. So as you're going up the hill, the water's getting cleaner. So the silted water is just right in the middle of the hill on the way up. That's, that's I can tell you right now. Outside of your witnessing it in person, that's all I can give you.
You, you witnessed runoff, could you, could you tell where?
Yes.
You know where it came from?
It was right between the two properties, so it didn't, it didn't, the actual problem.
That's where it's coming from.
Right, so it's, it's between 578 and 586.
We don't have.
Can I have a photo?
Coming from this one and that one, for example, my example of, it's coming out here and maybe it's coming together.
Because all you see is just plants, and so you get the landmarks outside of looking up the hill or down the hill.
So you're, so you're confirming that the silted runoff came at the property line between the two properties that we've, we've discussed in the past?
Yes, on, on the west, it, on the west.
So, so as you went downstream towards the Ronald Pool, which we know the water then crosses over to the south side of Hart Street, did it pick up any more silted runoff? No. So you feel like the silt is originating from the area that you witnessed between the two properties?
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm looking at the clock, we're almost up to 3:30, still on agenda, and I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to cut this off at this point, except I have to. What I would ask you to do is email those photographs to either of the ladies in the Selectmen's Office and ask them to print them, okay? And give them back to you and put the date and the approximate time.
Yeah, actually, that's a good idea. I think I'm having to see probably, so for some reason our service is not letting emails come off, I mean, the pictures come off.
Yeah, we're struggling with stuff here too.
It's, it's something on the phone, the phone to the email.
Okay, then you better alternate, an alternative is?
Or sign with those two girls is probably the way to start.
Try for that, if that doesn't work, try loading it onto a thumb drive. All right, because those can be printed at CVS or Walgreens or wherever. And we've been certainly company expensive doing that.
Right.
But since we have pictures and we have somebody who was there who can say, truly, this is what I saw, all right? That's what we need to do. Without something like that, we got no place to go. Obviously, the concern is we're going to stop the silt. Okay? Without something, especially when we can't access one of the properties.
I would think the type of summer we had, and the amount of time that went by, it should be almost nothing by now, just by natural growth.
All we got is what you saw and what you took. If we can print those, so, Mrs. Grassi, put this on the agenda for the next meeting, please.
Okay. And just so the record shows, that was during the four inch storm event, correct?
Yeah, eight, 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 four, you're right.
That was during the four inch storm event that occurred.
A what?
A four inch rain event that occurred on August 5th.
Yes.
That's when those pictures were taken.
That's right.
I want it in the record.
Yes.
Okay, so.
I was there today, but they're going to take pictures because Tom was taking pictures, so I don't know if not.
All I wanted was somebody to say, this is what I saw, and he said that, all right? Can you exactly say this one and this one, but at least we know the general area? So if we have to send a letter, whatever we decide to do, send a letter or whatever, we got some kind of something.
Right.
That says, because to this point we had nothing, and until he brought those pictures up, what he has taken, what he saw, we still had nothing, because what I got here is I can't use. All right, it's not what I asked for, but in any case.
You're trying to prove it's not because of landmarks, like you're, you're looking.
And I understand that, I understand it. Forest Hills Housing Development, are they on for, is it tomorrow night?
Madam Chair, I have.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Before you change from G to H.
Yeah, go ahead.
You can keep referring to my, well, that's a pond, it's wetness.
Yeah, okay, we got pictures of the pond, that's why we're talking about.
And Mr. Carr has filled it, filled it out for me before I crossed South Street.
Well, it's only going so far because it's a public, it's free.
Mr. Carr's house.
And point of order, that is coming back on the committee, that is the committee member as we move forward.
Yeah, yes.
Sorry, sorry.
Forest Hills, Mr. Ryan?
I have two issues to report on. The Town Conservation Commission has continued the meeting on the infiltration basin that's in the half in Dayton and half in Taunton. They have just hired a peer review engineer, so they have not had the opportunity to look at that, so that's, that's continued. In regards to, for still being on tonight's agenda, they have asked for continuance. Till our next meeting, which I believe will be September 15th, if the changes, I will make that an offer.
Has, has the plans changed since the beginning here originally, have they done revisions, are there any?
No, no, no plan changes whatsoever. I believe it hasn't been run into the hands of the Conservation Commission yet.
Oh, the Dayton one?
Yes.
Well, it was signed up right up at the last meeting. But before I get to that, do you know when Town Con Con made me bring this up?
I want to say, let me just look at my folder.
I did find out that information for Tim.
I believe they need to throw it Monday of the month, Mrs. Calabany is that correct in Taunton? So it should be.
Yeah.
September 13th, I believe.
Well, the next time they're going to discuss the basin is, they're going to want, wait until the peer reviews have reviewed. And as of right now, DI Trust has not even submitted any money to put in the 53G accounts yet, so.
Okay.
So, at the Conservation Commission meeting, I was there for another reason. But while I was sitting here, I believe the gentleman was their attorney, was addressing the Conservation Commission, and he made remind something about no need or didn't have to go before the Stormwater Committee. And so he finished his, his, whatever. And I put my hand up, was recognized as Stormwater Committee. And I told him that, I asked him, please don't make decisions for me. You will be appearing before the Stormwater Committee. And one of the major concerns we have is how can you go to the Town Con Con to have a basin approved to accept drainage water from Dayton in the city of Taunton, when you haven't come before any boards in the town of Dayton, including the Stormwater Committee, to talk about anything? His appearance there that night, nothing got resolved, except he was coming before them to say this was, you know, I think it was a continuation, whatever. But he just looked at me like, what do you mean? He didn't respond. He did say, I'm not making decisions for you, I suggest you did it. But anyhow, I still raise that question, to go to, to go to the city of Taun for anything on a project that's actually 99% Dayton, except for a basin somewhere? It makes no sense at all.
They do own a chunk of land in Taun, they didn't have the ability to build 25 houses in Taunton by the bright line.
Well, and if they were coming in from Taun and this just happened to be there, I'd still say, well, put that one on hold because I'm not sure that's going to be acceptable to the town of Dayton. So, but if you're going to do that. Does anyone else have anything on Forest Hills?
Only with that last kind of made, when we talk about the flow, like if it comes to tuition of the recording and reporting, you know, the inventory, what goes in, what goes out and all that stuff, how that's going to play. We don't think it's a day, but to think about reporting, any, any sectors we have.
Correct, and if in fact, the, the water is really going to be disposed of at Taun, then maybe a way that can be done, if they're going to build it, to do it in Dayton.
And if they charge, if they charge the stormwater as a utility, that's kind of complicated.
That's odd.
We can charge, yeah, we can charge them first.
On the MS4, I attended a Zoom workshop. A lot of it was just question and answers. It was the statewide stormwater meeting and Newton Tetter did speak about it, and I forget the lady's name from DEP. They're going to have another one in September, the reports due the 28th. So I, I mentioned to you about having the statistics available, you know, tons and cubic feet or whatever, relative to basin cleaning and all that good stuff.
Yeah, from what date?
July 1 of last year, same as the fiscal year, okay? The only thing that I was surprised that I questioned was, I sent an email to Mr. Tetter after. Emily Norton happened to mention, she's from the city of Newton. Excuse me, it wasn't Emily, it was the lady from Newton, Emily John Ryan, my day committee member. She's a counselor. But anyhow, the person representing the city, I think they were in the city, had mentioned something about, well, we haven't got the bylaw approved yet. And my question to Newton Tetter was, what bylaw? I thought everyone had to have a bylaw. And his response was, you're supposed to have it updated and this relates to removing the, you know, the impurities and that, which we had talked about before. So we'll take a little look at that. I did respond to him and tell him, we are going to be looking at our Stormwater Bylaw in Mexico. The first thing we really have to address is the fact that there are two different boards now. When that was done years ago, the board of selection was the board of health. So we're going to be doing that, but I'm still not convinced that the bylaw we have doesn't already address what he was talking about, because he says you have two years to do it. And I'm thinking, I don't remember us requiring changes. I thought ours were pretty good, we'll look at it, whatever. So I'll be talking to probably Mr. Berry, Mr. Killip, like MS4, September 28th. This will drop the date, hopefully we can get it out, I guess, before then. The next item, Jay.
Wait, I have a question.
Excuse me.
Did the Selectmen vote to give you the authority to sign the MS4?
Yeah, that's, that was, that was the actual reason I was at the Selectmen's meeting last week, not the other stuff. Was.
You were called upon many a time.
One of them. At that, at that statewide stormwater meeting, it was Newton Tetter who said that, he said it was requiring that there be an official record of who can sign the MS4. And it should be, whether you're the chief executive or whatever, I think somebody said, somebody who can answer the question basically, who said they can designate anybody. So I did ask it and they designated the chairman of the Stormwater Committee. Because initially they named me and I said, no, don't name me. Name the chairman like all our, all our positions are. So they did do that and I'll have a copy of that to put in our, our books that we have to have. But Newton said, we didn't have to file with them, they just wanted, they committed to check the records. They want to make sure that whoever is signing it was authorized. whoever designed it was authorized to do so. Subdivision Stormwater Structure Inventory, well, I think we kind of run out of town, uh, time, you know, run out of town, that's a good idea. Run out of time on this, so we'll move it to next, uh, next regular. Um, this particular one to act on the schedule, we voted last.
Last week, I mean, last.
Last month, last week, whenever we met. Um, however, it really wasn't on the agenda, and even though we vote, that doesn't really count. So, uh, I need a motion to, uh, establish the, uh, Stormwater Committee regular meeting, regular monthly meeting scheduled to be the third Wednesday of the month.
Second.
So, second.
Second.
Discussion. Here we go, none. Mr. Pies.
Aye.
Mr. Phillips.
Aye. Well, I was gonna say, do we set a time with that?
Yes.
At 1:30. Excuse me, at 1:00.
1:00.
1:00, the picture and dessert.
Oh, well. Mr. Ed, yeah, um, Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Mr. Blatton. So we're all sitting there. Uh, correspondence, do we have anything? None. Uh, public input, is there any public out there?
There is one, look.
Yes, there's, there's.
You're a public?
Yeah, well, it's.
It's a lot of things.
It's, it's not something that was needed to be put on the agenda, I mean, we don't have to finish it today, but somebody put in a single-family house in town, and it was over 35,000 square feet, it was dark, so they used a stormwater permit. Well, it got to the end where they were trying to occupy the house, and I can sign off on the septic, because the septic was completed, and the building department could sign off on their end, but stormwater, the yard still hadn't been mown and seeded. There was evidence of, like, erosion that might overtop the erosion control, et cetera, et cetera. So I did not feel comfortable signing off on the building permit from a stormwater point of view. So I, I did this letter that'll be attached to the, um, the building permit. There's no address on this, because this is a template of what I wanna use, and again, we can talk about it at the next meeting. But effectively, it's basically just saying that even though we're signing off on the building permit, the stormwater permit is still open, so we still have the right to get on the property to look at it until you're done with it. Basically, keep tabs on it.
Well, does it sign the CO, really?
Does it ever get compliance on the septic system, even, or leave?
Just the CO.
Yeah, it's only for sanitary sewer though.
Oh, okay.
It's named in the building code, just for sanitary sewer.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
So that's why I can't hold it up because of stormwater?
The only other way that I would be able to is if there was an impact to an adjacent property with a rock, and in this particular case, that was, that's true.
I'm still stuck on certificate of occupancy, because I'm thinking one thing. I'm thinking you. So do we need to say, and a certificate of occupancy relative to whatever you just said?
Unless you said the building permit certificate of occupancy?
This says the Board of Health signed a certificate of compliance and a certificate of occupancy. My point is, Board of Health doesn't sign the CO.
Right.
Yeah.
So we need to break this up. How do you wanna identi, so the first thing is up to the septic system, that's fine.
No, no, I think it needs to include the building certificate of occupancy.
For?
Uh, for the single-family dwelling.
Yeah, but Board of Health doesn't sign it.
They do.
I thought you signed the CO.
No, I, I have four signatures on the CO.
Maybe it should be like issued the certificate of compliance for the septic and signed the certificate of occupancy, maybe that's.
Although.
Because I know it's signed.
Mr. Ed, yeah, when you say, I haven't issued the CO yet, that's what makes me think. I know you have a role in that.
Oh, yeah, I'm the one who actually signs and releases it.
Right.
But in order to get to that point, I need five different things. My sanitary sewer is one.
We need to clarify this, because the Board of Health doesn't per se.
To sign off on, maybe.
That's what I'm trying to get. That's what I.
You can leave it as certificate of compliance. I'll find that, because I can ensure this, I can ensure the certificate of occupancy allows for compliance. So you can just send it there, that's fine.
Oh, okay, so you started that whole.
So, again, since this isn't on the agenda, what I'm gonna ask is that you worked out the key. Because that one I picked up immediately when I saw it, because it was confusing.
Yeah, no, it didn't need to be done today. It's going to let everybody know on the table, go on.
Um, so, Mrs. Grass, I mean, you need to finalize this draft one, tab, whatever you want as well.
Yeah, as the issue, I can do that.
Um, next time is.
Let me say one other thing to public, but, um, I'd just like to inform the board that, um, there'll be an informal discussion on Hunter's Hill with their attorney from Wantagold Homes, which will be cast again tonight. Wanted to stand their benefit of conservation, and their footprint up there has drastically changed, so they may, they may look for some other opinions.
Coming from town workers?
Uh, no, this is Hunter's Hill. Um, in regards to, um, the road acceptances in Philly's lane and secret states in Longton, I've done a quick look.
No, I think it shows that they can travel by, by the road.
No, no.
Do we have any other public input? Here we go, we get five sets of minutes. That was an awful lot to try to digest, quite frankly. So what I would say is, if you're willing to vote to approve these, um, as draft minutes, if you haven't had a chance to read them, that way you can read them and make changes. Or if you approve them and then find, like, I said you were at the Tonkonkum meeting, you weren't there. Like, I know I didn't say this, but if I said Mr. Berry was there, you still have time to say, hey, that is correction, I wasn't there. Make those corrections at a future meeting. I just wanna make these, be, these minutes available to the public, because they're kinda old.
Correct.
So, either you can approve them with the understanding you can come back for revisions, or they can be released, uh, for review purposes, which means we'll vote to accept them later. At the Selectmen's meeting last week, um, there was a discussion about minutes, and, um, one member of the board expressed that he did not feel he was obligated to correct minutes and whatever. Uh, my response is every member of every committee of every board, whether appointed or elected, is responsible for the contents of the minutes. That's the official record. Everyone's expected to read them. And if there are errors or corrections, omissions, whatever, they need to bring into the attention of the board or committee before they're approved, but you can do it after the fact. And to say that the minutes are based upon what the person wrote who took the minutes, I don't accept that. It is not acceptable. Haven't done minutes for many years. There are so many distractions that take place during public meetings, even without COVID and Zoom, that the person taking them does the best they can. There's an expression that says, I'm responsible for what I say, but not for what you hear. That's why it's important that everyone read the minutes. So, having said that, I wanna make sure, because this was, this was a gazillion pages that came up. Whatever you're comfortable doing is fine. They can be accept for review, excuse, yeah, accept for review, which means we will vote on later. You can vote to approve them, and if you find anything, because you haven't gotten through all of these minutes, bring it back. So, Mr. Phillips.
Number one, thank you, Ross, for doing such a good job with minutes. Number two, have you had time to review these? You have, okay. Well, I have to, I've read them thoroughly, and my comments are in there, so I'm okay with them.
But I have to tell you, I'm not sure, quite frankly, because especially with the discussions that are in those minutes about the Tonkonkum meetings, okay? And I bet you a comment about who wasn't there, and I think that's what I'm taking here. So, I'm comfortable with the minutes they are, the way they are right now, that we just sent out. The last ones came out this morning. However, that doesn't mean they're 100%. That's why I just say it. We have options, and I hope the committee will decide what they want to do.
No, I just wanted to let everybody know I did review them thoroughly, so I'm okay with them as a standard.
I, I, I didn't also.
Okay.
I, I echo that. Ross did a phenomenal job.
I do have help.
You don't tell that shit, don't tell that shit.
So.
That may be.
You wanna entertain a blanket, all the side tables, you don't have the side tables, you wanna win that back?
We can do all together.
Tom, go for it.
It's getting me a tight time, too.
I did tell, I did tell everybody at the meeting after I said that, that the reason that, um, the comments I made relative to each individual person's responsibility was that I would then do draw a rest because the person that co-signs these minutes is, you know.
Yeah, right.
Unnamed, in short pants.
Okay, good. May, make a motion. 七个 minutes, vows, follow means. May 26th, regular meeting, October 21st. June 8th, meeting, site visit, 2371 County Street. June 24th, regular meeting. July 20th, site visit, Zero Brook Street. July 21st, regular meeting.
Sure.
What's your main, second, and a discussion? Here we go, none. Mr. Pies.
Aye.
Phillips. Ed, yeah.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
You should have, you had no one saying yes.
Aye.
We're gonna accept that as a yes. Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Burnett. Mr. Blatton. Is there anything else that we need to consider for the next agenda or anything else? Not allowed to take a motion to adjourn.
No.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All of this, Mr. Pies, Mr. Phillips.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Mr. Berry, is he? No. That was a yes for Mr. Berry. Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Burnett. Still up. Where are you, Jerry?
Thank you.